Welcome everyone for some attendance. So jumping right in, item one. We will be discussing the proposed amendments to the city of Woodland Hills Development and Construction Standards 2.8.6 3D and City Code Title 1017.1 Fire Hydrants C6. Do we have anyone in attendance who would care to make any comment on the proposed change? Do you see anybody online that, oh?
Yeah, just generally is this gonna require more hydrants or just the flow to the hydrants?
Wayne's got his hand up with an answer.
It's a flow issue, it's not more hydrants, but it's the flow and piping that are associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, if nothing else, we will move on.
Oh yeah, and the air pressure they're going up to?
I'm sorry?
Can we ask the fire flow pressures they're going to be at regarding?
Uh, yeah, well, it says.
3,000?
Yeah.
I was gonna say for a half a.
Gallons per minute? Okay, anything else? Item two, we are going to table that. Wayne and I have had conversations with our city attorneys and so we will revisit that at later date. Just to read what it's about, the proposal to amend portions of the city code titles 4, 8, 9, 10, 11. To clarify, naming the rules of the building official who oversees compliance with building and construction codes and so on. Who oversees compliance with some. Item three, consideration on request from Robert Nelson to annex 21.65 pages of property owned by Robert and Linda Nelson, Robert and Linda Nelson Holdings LLC, Noel Ray and Sandra P. Hyatt, Corey Ray and Jessica S. Hyatt and Michael A. Griffiths into Woodland Hills Development. Do we have anybody here that would care to comment on that?
Yeah, I do. I live at the top of that group of homes that you want to annex and I don't want to be annexed.
Okay, we left yours out, Nadine.
What?
We left yours out.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I talked to you about it, you didn't want to vote in, so we left you out.
Okay, good.
Alright.
Are we still good being neighbors, right?
Huh?
Are we still good being neighbors?
Well, I think so, maybe I'll, I'll think of it.
We'd like to.
No, I just don't like your tax base.
That's.
We don't either. Okay, nice to do the problem. Anyone else? Anyone online, Joey? See that I can't hear us? Is this everybody, is Ted and you? Double people. Alright, well, with no further comment, oh, Ted, there are them.
Nothing to do with that one, I have on, on the one I'm pulling up on the agenda. Bullet point two is different than than yours.
No, we're taken with bullet point two.
Okay, so the setbacks. I have a proposal to consider a change in the building envelope front setback. Sign myself. Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, no. Alright, but then we will close the public hearing portion and open the work session. And Ted is here, so item four, proposed ordinance and amendment to the city of Woodland Hills Development Construction Standards 2.8.6 3D and City Code Title 1017.1 Fire Hydrants. Ted, are you available to give us an overview of that?
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me yet? Oh?
Yeah, still not coming through.
Can you hear me? Oh, hold on, hold on.
You've been just quiet.
And you can't hear me?
Just keep humming and then we'll know when it goes live. Ted, the Idaho State song would work.
Yeah.
You can't hear me yet?
Yeah.
You're here.
Okay, as I said, it looked like I was doing okay on my side. So yeah, what this is, in general, this was actually something that was initiated by Chief Northrup with the change to the fire code, as we're getting larger and larger homes in a community, the current construction standards read that our level of service is to provide 1,500 gallons a minute for two hours for fire flow. And that is in the, if you look at the international fire code, that's good up to 3,600 square foot home. And as we know, we're getting larger and larger homes in our community. Now, you do get a discount for having fire hydrants, but that also is offset by locations that can have multiple fires at a time, i.e. urban interface communities is one of those. So in order to try and keep up with, you know, the, the size of homes that are being built, we're in proposing to increase the fire flow to 3,000 gallons a minute for three hours, which we went through and modeled the city's water system and we can do that in all locations in the city except where we have some, some old six inch water line remaining, mainly over on Maple and that area. East and Lakeview and those streets, because of the old six inch water lines can't meet that, but everywhere else in the city, we can meet that flow, but it also changes the storage requirement, because 3,000 gallons a minute for three hours is 540,000 gallons. So now we have to be able to store that much water in our tanks. Depending on which, how we count our storage in the tanks, depends on whether we need additional or not. But even if we, even if we do, because the majority of this will be to serve future development, it can be included in an impact fee analysis, which we can then include in our impact fee. So when we collect impact fees, the cost for a tank can be included in that. So it's not put, the burden is not put on the, you know, the existing water customers, so. So the, the initial reason Chief Northrup proposes was to because of the large, larger homes that are being built in the city, to be able to have that kind of fire flow at these homes and be able to sustain fighting a fire for long enough at these bigger homes. It just changes, and we're set up to do that. And then as we move in an impact fee, we may collect some more funds from impact fees to do future water tank. So that's kind of the premise of it.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it was just mainly, the chief was getting nervous and writing so about these larger homes that are being built and having sufficient fire flow and storage to fight them.
Thanks, Ed.
Can, I have a question, so how often do we test these flows of all of the hydrants? Because we have quite a few hydrants around and we're gonna increase the flow, how do we maintain that level and how do we know, or how often do we test them for, for their flow level?
So the chief goes around and tests them, I know at least once or twice a year, checks, you can do, you can do flow tests at hydrants to determine what your flows are, those hydrants, and I know, in fact, we're planning to go around and do it here soon again. So those do get tested and additionally, what we would typically do is if a developer comes in and wants to develop a section of the city, we ask them to submit a plan of their water system that we could put into our water model and then we can test that to see if they're gonna be able to get sufficient flow. And if not, what might be recommended to do that? I mean, the nice thing in this city is we have a lot of gravity, so usually achieving flows and pressures has not been that difficult. Well, let me reword that, we, we don't have any more gravity than most other places, but we have more elevation.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Ted.
Yeah.
Alright. Again, item five, regarding the amendment to the city codes, titles 4, 8, 9, 10, 11 is tabled. Item six, the proposed ordinance adopting the annexation of 21.65 pages of property owned by Robert and Linda Nelson Holdings LLC, Noel Ray and Sandra P. Hyatt, Corey Ray and Jessica S. Hyatt and Michael A. Griffiths. And one thing that I do want to know is that Noel Hyatt, with respect to his property, has asked that his property be grandfathered with respect to its current use, so that would be one. So, Robert, do you have anything you'd like to provide as the council deliberates on this point?
I think you probably got it all.
Okay, very good. Any questions? What we have to ask down?
Yeah, don't change anything there.
Alright, then we'll move on. Item seven, recommendation to amend the city fencing ordinance and propose changes to city code 1011-8 B1E regarding fences and edges. So this was previously discussed and sent back to the planning commission. Wayne, do you have anything that Chairman Branson, anything that you care to elaborate?
The main change of it is to allow fences on property lines. But we did make a change in the wording to clarify on corner lots. The issue with where, has it, well, it's written in your, in your documentation there, so we did make some minor word changes to that, but the main emphasis at the beginning of all of this was to allow fence, I see change, allow fences on property lines in the R119 zoning that does not have an overlay, so it would not pertain to Summit Creek area or the rest of the city, primarily at this point, it pertains to 4 Seasons subdivision.
No. With that, that part applies to all zones. The way we did it, what we changed applies to all zones, Wayne.
Let me see, I don't see any limitations. I don't see any limitations with what I'm reading.
In, in the heading, in the heading of that ordinance, you may not have the heading to it, but it's R119 without any, without any.
Not the changes, not this one.
Without any overlay. Well, I'm, I'm sorry. It's several times, I'm getting it mixed up with another ordinance that we looked at. It is, it is citywide, R119, and the only place that is right now is in 4 Seasons.
It's citywide. Right over here, so, on the property line.
Yep, I stand corrected again, thanks, Severn, yes. We're, we're changing, changing that to allow fences along the property line.
In the entire city.
Entire city.
Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions here.
Yeah.
From, one, it says shall not be located less than 30 feet from a property line abutting at street except for a street abutting at side yard. I thought it was going to be all streets would have the 30 foot setback, because if you're on the street and it's a side yard, you're still on the street. And so to me, if we were looking at that as being, you know, as a a zone that, you know, for side distance and/or if we ever put a trail on our city, you know, type, type of thing, that, that might be a problem. So that's one concern I had, and then just in the ordinance overall, on the 1, 2, 3, 4th, whereas it says along with notification to the Pason Chronicle and the newspaper of general circulation within the city. Do we have any newspapers of general circulation in the city?
Pason Chronicle is the one that's the free one down at the mailboxes.
So I'm just wondering why we have that in there since we don't have a general circulation in the city. I'd say that doesn't need to be included. But that's just a thought, but I really want to know the difference in a street abutting, a property line abutting a street except for a street that abuts a side yard, it seems contradictory to me.
The point behind that was to, as you mentioned it, to address the safety feature on a side side yard that abuts a street, that's why that was included, and that was a change that we made from when the ordinance was previously presented to you. So it's to preserve the vision on a side yard that abuts a street.
So I'm just seeing that, okay, so here's a corner, this, this house on the corner has to be 30 feet back, but the, the house right behind it that's also on the same street could go all the way to the street. That just seems weird to me.
Not a house, but a fence.
No, I meant the house there with its fence can go all the way, so the one in the corner has to be 30 feet in, but the one right behind it is still abutting a street, which is, might be its side yard, would then have, be able to go all the way, and so, I don't know, it just seems like if it's abutting a street, it should have the setback.
Okay, Severn, you look like you have something to say about that?
I don't know whether I should say it in saccharine this way, but the reason that we made these changes, when you kicked it back from the, from city council to the planning commission, was our understanding then would you didn't want the setback on both sides? And that's why we made the change, because what we understand the city council was concerned about was having 30 feet, you know, if it's an R119, it's 30 feet setback. Okay, if it's an R19, or most of the rest of the city, the setback is 50 feet. And so if you're on a corner lot and you're 50 feet back from the side of your house and 50 feet back from the front of the house, you've got, you've got no yard that you can fence, basically. Okay, and so we said the front plane of the house, so it's 30 feet or 50 feet. But the side yard, that will give, still get the view, the safety view, that somebody coming up that street will still be able to see someone coming down the end of the corner, which is the other concern, that you expressed the last city council meeting when you kicked it back, and so that's why we made, the change we made.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with this, the changing it from 50 to 30, I think that's fine.
No, no, you can't change it from 50 to 30.
Well, what?
The setback is 50 feet depending upon the zone.
Your setback for your house is 50, setback right here says, no, less than 30 feet from the property line for the fence. So I'm talking.
Remember, it's the front plane of the house, which is 50 feet or 30 feet.
Right, right.
On the side, the way it was written originally, it had to be 50 feet or 30 feet from the side.
Right.
So you really could not fence a side yard. And that's what we heard the city council saying, you didn't want that.
I don't know if that was a unanimous decision at that time, but.
When you kicked it back, you didn't make the decision.
I still have a concern that, that, that what it seems to abutting a street is abutting a street.
Hey, Carrie, would you guys mind if I just maybe give a quick engineer's perspective? The reason why it's at a corner is because you have a street that's coming into that street and that driver's gotta be able to see up the street to see if any traffic's coming, but he doesn't, he only has to look so far up the street, based on speed limit and braking distance, but so the house behind the one on the corner could set his fence closer to the street because safety, for safety, they don't have to, the driver sitting there waiting to enter the street doesn't have to look that far up. He only needs to see basically to the house on the corner, past that house. So I know aesthetically it seems weird, but when you're looking at it from a traffic aspect, it's because they have to be able to look so far up the street, but not all the way. So the first house has to have their fence setback so you can have a visual line, but the next house behind it, if it's not on, if it's not on a corner, the driver doesn't need to see that far. So that one's, for safety reasons, wouldn't have to be setback.
And isn't, is that pretty standard for most communities?
Yeah, yeah, normally, they call it a site triangle in engineering road terms. You have to be able to look so far up the street when you're sitting there waiting to enter traffic for safety, but it's only, and, and with an engineering aspect, it's based on speed and braking distance, but, but you don't have to be able to see all the way up the street, right, only so far. So that's why really only the house on the corner needs to have their setback, the others wouldn't if they're not on the corner, because you don't need to see past their fences. And that's pretty common, Janet, too, most cities have that kind of setback there on corners. Some do it differently, some have site triangles, so if you're driving in other, some communities and you see a fence on a corner that's on a 45 degree angle across their lot, that's why, it's to give that site distance for the car sitting there waiting to enter that street, because it's a site triangle.
I lived in R on a corner lot and I couldn't bring my fence all the way up on the side yard. I had to leave it back so that people could see.
If you go over the head sidewalk.
Well, yeah, so that's. Well, it just seems to me.
I'm just gonna ask that, Joey has, since we can't record this, Joey has expressed a lot of concern about being able to take minutes on this, so let's, one at a time, please. Alright, so David.
Anyway, I had this on in R. I don't disagree that it might look weird, but again, if you buy a corner lot, you know, you understand there's a few restrictions.
Yeah, well, and I think part of my concern too is, it just seems strange that, you know, if, if you're abutting a street and you're on a corner and you have a restriction, if you're abutting a street, it's not on a corner, there's no restriction, so just, it just seems strange, and I wonder if it would impede anything in the future with regards to trails that go along the roads, because we don't want people walking in the road. So just, I mean, even though we have a setback there, and that will, the fence won't go all the way to the road, we know all of our roads are not necessarily along the lines that they were originally intended, and some of the roads actually go into our pavement, so. No.
Doral, did you have a comment? And then Ben.
Yeah, to Severn, this, this ordinance you've given us applies to areas in the city that have sidewalks as well, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, just, because when you have a sidewalk, I, I just, I'm just gonna ask if anyone feels the way I do, that it kind of changes, because if I'm 30 feet in from my sidewalk, you just gave 30 feet of my yard to the sidewalk users on a corner. But, but if I'm not on the corner, I get to put my fence, I get to put my fence right on the sidewalk.
Right on the property line.
That's correct, which is basically the sidewalk, after you use your, yeah.
It's, it's basically. The sidewalk's in the right of way. Property line is not in the right of way.
Pretty close to the, it's about 30 feet from the side.
It's not, it's not.
What do you think, a foot and a half? Well, that, I'll give that, okay, but, but it's just, it's a curiosity to me that.
Isn't limitation, isn't limitation six feet within that triangle? You can still have a fence, it's just getting tall. You have to be able to see over the top.
If it's 30 feet in.
No.
No.
What am I reading here, this is 42 inches, 30 feet in from the property line.
Okay, Ben.
If I'm not mistaken, I think what you're talking about side yards is for quarter lots, correct?
Any side.
Because all other homes are defined by the front plane of the house, and a house has to be 30 feet off the property line at the closest, correct? Or is it 50?
No, there are some, there are some, some, some.
Okay, so even then, that's as close as the fence can be, is, is right next to the front plane of the house, correct?
You can't go beyond the front plane of that.
So even if, if it's on a side, if it's not a corner lot, the front plane of the house is defining how close that can come to the road. If it's a corner lot, then you have the front plane of the house, so the owner is defined, you know, which side of their, their corner lot is the front plane, and then their side lot, you know, is defined, one by the front plane of the house, and then 30 feet off of the road headed back. Is that true?
That's true.
So there's no, so the property, so like on my lot, I live just right here on High Line, I have the front plane of my house, which is 50 feet off the street, so I could put a fence that went off there towards the edge of my lots and all the way back, but it's not gonna come up towards the fence or the street at all. Is that correct?
That's true, one, one thing, one caution I may add is that even on not a corner lot, the front of the house doesn't always face the street. It may face the next lot.
Are we defining the front plane of the house as the side that faces the street or the front?
Where, where the door.
Okay, so that helps us better understand.
That's why I said some, except for a street abutting a side yard.
Mine's on the right.
It seems to me, yeah, I mean, think of Raymond's house, that'd be their whole.
Oh, for sure.
So, or, you know, there's a few other people that have multiple sides that are on a street.
Any other comments or questions?
It sounds to me like we need to define kind of this, this side of the house that we're talking about, to clarify this, so it's not, every house is a little different. You know, if we define the front plane of the house as the side of a home facing the street, I think this works.
Well, then, we should probably give clear direction to the planning commission then, just so they can know exactly what the concerns.
I don't think that would be necessarily right, because you could have your driveway coming in this way up the street in the front of your house this way, then you would be able to technically fence in the whole front of your house, which would then be the side of the house.
That's what I'm saying, if we define the front plane of the house as the side facing the street, then it will help keep all of our fences in backyards and off the streets.
Okay, David.
So I agree that all of the discussion about side, front facing corners is interesting. I'm just a little shocked that the bigger issue isn't that we're introducing an ordinance to allow fences throughout the city when we haven't had. So that's, that's just a little surprising to me.
But this is just R19, this isn't the whole city.
No, 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 no.
It's the whole city, that's what you just said, I thought it was R19. Last time we talked about it, it was only R19.
Yeah, we, yeah.
To me, this is a fundamental change to the way, to the look of one of us. This is not a minor change. So I'm just raising that as an issue and saying, wow.
Okay, Jen.
Well, I thought, and, but I thought last time we talked about, maybe it was just me, but I, and we were all kind of talking over each other, so I'm sure that was part of the problem, but I thought we were gonna have, it seems like it would make sense that you'd have one set of rules for R19, and if you're going to make a fencing ordinance for the rest of Woodland Hills, that it would be something different. Because I just don't think it's a cookie cutter what is gonna fit all, I just don't. It seems like this should just be for 4 Seasons. It makes sense, this is geared towards those lots and the way those houses are.
Severn.
There is a fencing ordinance that has been in existence for a number of years, that covers all the zones. Alright, 1011-8. And it has in it that, the one thing we were changing was in that ordinance, you had to be, the fence had to be five feet off the property line. And so we were creating a no man's zone of 10 feet between where the fences could be. And that's part of what Wayne described last time for the city council. We're, we're trying to get rid of that no man's zone, and so you can put the fence on the property line. And that exists in all zones, okay? Now, in 1011-8, there are, there are types of fencing, it says it has to be, and it does not apply to R119. It has to be at least 75% open, it can't be no more than six feet. It can't be no more than six feet high. Okay, so that fencing ordinance has been in existence for years. It actually passed it while I was in Tonga. Because I was interested in it, because I built a fence around my garden, which is in violation of the new fencing ordinance. Luckily, sub eight says the line's alright as long as I keep it up, because it's eight feet high. And it goes around my garden. Uh, and as long as I keep it up, I'm alright.
But the deer have agreed to only jump five feet.
Oh, they have. They haven't, they haven't jumped eight feet yet. And that's what we were told. They can't jump the eight feet. That's why ours is eight feet high.
Well, we discussed fences around gardens and fences around sports courts as being kind of as almost separately from just a regular old fence that went around your house. So we have, we have discussed that quite, quite a length. And so I think that we're not talking about those types of fences in this ordinance that we're looking at.
Further comments or questions? Severn.
I'm sorry to keep adding stuff, but with this new R one nineteen fencing ordinance, which is here at C, that we're adding to the fencing ordinance. There are, in my opinion, some issues that need to be fixed. In the normal fencing ordinance, we, we have identified what are legitimate fencing materials. In R one nineteen, we've only identified which are not legitimate fencing materials. And there are other elements of the overall fencing ordinance that don't apply to R one nineteen. And in my opinion, there are other things that we need to do to clean up the language between what applies in R one nineteen and what applies in the rest of the city.
Okay, so with respect to the planning commission's recommendation then, I mean, is, is this something that needs to be reconsidered, or do you want this to come to a
The recommendation that we made is a standalone recommendation. I just think there are some other things that we need to clean up.
Okay, point taken. Alright. Okay, item eight is feasibility, jet well in time and rich view development annexing into the city of Willamette Hills. And is there a John Stout here on behalf? Okay. Uh, Mr. Stout, do you have anything that you'd like the council to hear before uh further deliberations?
No, we, we just wanted to present this to the city, see what, see what we can do and kind of get the ball rolling in that direction.
Okay, and just by way of a little bit of background, uh you wanna provide maybe a little bit of background as to why you have made this decision?
So speak, you want to address it?
Yeah, I'm sorry about the Part of our property already is we pay Willamette Hills taxes on some of it, and some of it, most of it's outbridge, but um, we also have our access road on the summit creek. It just, I don't know. Makes more sense to us to kind of be over in Willamette Hills than it does, you know, cringe.
Why do I love that?
My question is, okay, so this is where we're looking. This is Summit Creek Drive. This is um Lofer Canyon. So the arrow says well in time with it pointing this way, but I assume that we're talking about this entire thing in red, not just this small little
That's why it says Jeff Altine and Ridge Development.
Which one is which?
Um, probably the darker yellow. That's our well in time.
Okay.
Ridge Development is more out by the summit creek area.
Okay. Just when I was looking at it this way, the way, you know, for, I was like, it seems backwards, so.
Carmen, you, you guys all have this map?
This is the map we have.
But I don't have colors. So this red and the orange.
This is the one nine nine.
Look at the heavy line. That heavy line is the border between Elbridge and Willamette Hills. And so this is the original map that Elbridge City Council and Willamette Hill City Council had discussed, the, the map that they brought up last time, or this is what was agreed to, but never got signed as far as the, the
Property line.
Boundary between the two, between the two cities. And that's, this, all this does is, is makes more, more of that right.
So Carmen, then, so we're, we, this is the part right now that we just talked about earlier, correct, with, with Hyatt's property, et cetera. Right here. So this is just an extending, extending that this way?
Well, it, it goes even further than that. It's, it's all of, it's all of Walentines property, right? Yeah, so all of Walentines property is in the agreement between the two city councils from years ago.
Right, right, right. I remember that one. Okay, so is there any property that would remain Elbridge or um county in between?
Maybe.
Just Nadine's property. So there would be one little, one pit parcel?
Island.
Island. So three parcels total that would not be in.
Actually, two.
I'm, I'm not sure about like that cul-de-sac and there's
Yeah, the cul-de-sac northbound circle. That's, that's Elbridge's northbound circle. It's still in Elbridge.
Okay.
But the agreement between the two city councils was based on access, which, which properties were easier to access from
Right, right, right. That's what I've been saying for two of them. That was, that was Elbridge's wish that if it accessed on Willamette Hill side, they wanted it to be Willamette Hill side, but accessed on their side. For road maintenance and things like that.
I just wanted to make sure that we were aware that there are some island in between the two.
There isn't island now. It's, it's just bigger.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional questions or comments with Walentines or those in attendance?
The only, the only thing I, I realized that this was, this one agreed on, and we had the Elbridge City Council come and basically say that they wanted to finalize this agreement.
Right.
I'm just curious, it would, does it benefit us at all if we approach it from that direction? Rather than individual lots and just say, Elbridge, let's formalize this and let's make this agreement. I mean, it ends up being about the same thing. But.
It does. My only concern with that is historically, my understanding is that the reason this was never signed is because consensus could never be reached. And so I, I don't know if it would be a solution or it would just be introducing a problem. You know, I, I hate to sound cavalier, like we just want to cherry pick all the, the properties that are willing to come, but at the same time, I, I, I don't know that we could ever come to an agreement. We could certainly interrupt the subject, but I, again, historically, my understanding is that's why the agreement was not signed, is because agreement couldn't be read or reached.
Well, and I apologize that I was out earlier. That was with, I was out with Mayor Zit Haddock? Matt Gerich? The new name, the new mayor?
Oh. Well, I, I, I
I think that's his last name.
Remember, but I can't
And that's where I was. I provided him with a copy of the two thousand nine proposed boundary adjustment agreement with Elbridge. And then we kind of walked in the back room and looked at what Robert Nelson was looking at doing with his property and how it would hook in to the Hyatts and where the Walentines would come in. And he would like to sit down with the council, but he didn't seem opposed to this moving forward. And I did want to know that we would keep in touch with him.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I mean, we do want to be good neighbors, so. Okay, thank you. Alright, what did?
Also to David's point, just like Nadine doesn't want to be annexed in, she stayed in the county. And so you can make that boundary declaration as far as whose boundary is where, but until somebody wants to annex in, you have to press the force.
For the county properties.
Yeah.
But some of these aren't Elbridge properties. That, that would be
No, we're not counting.
Yeah, so some of this is actually taken from Elbridge.
Yeah, again, I just want to make sure that we're that we have a, a, a agreement between the two cities and that nobody's gonna get mad at us. That's, that's I don't know. I've been in other cities where they just steal other cities. I'm like, eh, I don't want to be that guy. I just
Right, I know. My, my personal preference, though, is to be that branch of the property. Alright, well, we'll, uh, thank you for the in, information and uh have further discussions. Thank you. Okay. Uh, item nine, a planning commission update from Chairman Fredson.
Just a couple of things, Mayor. We, um the item that you tabled tonight, uh we're waiting for some uh final recommendation to wording from the city attorneys on that. And once we receive that and review it, then we'll have, we'll probably call a special planning commission meeting to review that and make a recommendation and back to city council for the planning commission on that particular matter. So, um, also, we've received, uh the city's received a letter from David Alter, who's been, um the engineer, civil engineer, uh, or a city consultant on the Adams home. And uh, he's finalized things there with the Adams engineer. And so our plan is to uh get together, planning commission review that site plan and uh, uh, make, uh, at least finish the planning commission's part of that process for the city, so.
Wayne?
Yes.
He, he has he reviewed it with the other party's engineer?
No.
Just the Adams?
Just the Adams. Uh we waited quite a while for a response from them and we haven't got any. So decision was made with our attorneys to move forward with the process from the city standpoint. Uh, we think that everything has been satisfied that the city needs and requires, and so we're going to move forward with it.
So, so David Alder will give you the recommendation that he has first, and will he then come here and give us a recommendation or just through you?
Probably through us unless you want to report from him. Uh, that's up to the council, but, but his recommendation didn't come to plan, planning commission came to the city, uh, to the mayor, so I guess that's up to you all whether you want to report from him or, or not. His letter's available, so we'll have to see. Um, we've, uh, my, as I've indicated to you, we're moving forward with a review of the general plan. I've invited all of you to contribute whatever you wanted to, to us, give your thoughts or ideas as we move forward with that. So that's still an open invitation, but I haven't heard from anybody yet, so.
When, when will you start?
Now.
Okay. Yeah, I had some thoughts too, so.
No, we, we welcome those. Okay, thank you. The last thing was, uh, we're, are still working on the development agreement in the summit creek. Uh, they're doing some research as are we on a couple of those areas. We've talked to our attorney about it and they're uh, going to be uh, making contact with Summit Creek's attorney on a number of issues. Uh, so that's still moving forward, uh, in light of a, kind of a temporary pause uh, to work through, um recommendation proposal that Summit Creek is making to the city as far as exchanging some city roads uh, in in exchange for work that they're willing to do on some infrastructure work that, that that the city is obligated to do, but may not have complete funds to do that. So we're still moving ahead with the development agreement. It won't be finalized by any means. Has to have your approval or public hearing on it, but it's, it's going forward. So just wanted to report that to you. Any questions on any of those? Okay, thank you.
And actually, Wayne, your item ten too on the preliminary approval of Stone's Hollow, so sit tight.
I just really like that name.
Okay.
I already told her that.
I'm just so glad you didn't put it as, oh, something.
So Wayne, do you, you have some things to?
We made, we reviewed it, planning commissioned, and their preliminary plat that they have for a uh, two lot subdivision, and our recommendation to you is to, to approve it. And so Mr. Stones is here to give a presentation and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, sorry.
Which, which Mr. Stones?
The Stones Hollow stones.
Okay, well, David, uh let's hear your pitch.
Yeah, uh, well, we were gonna go with some copyright thing, but I, I decided Stones Hollow would be better. I think it was like Rolling Stones, it did a little fun, but I'm like yeah, kidney stones, actually I have plenty of those, so we're not gonna do that. So, uh, originally we wanted to go to the full final plat in the improvements. However, the county made a change to where they're, they wait for an approval before they finish. That's a recent change. I think the city's gonna have to change, um the order or something. I don't know what the process is, but, uh, we've already paid the fees to the county as far as doing the, you know, for, for, uh, for the protest, the, uh septic system, but, uh, they can't finalize that until we get approval. And those kind of backwards are what it's supposed to be, but they changed, so we have to follow that. So we're asking for at least a conditional approval on a preliminary plat. And then there's a couple of things we, um obviously then it would, you know, the final approval would be based upon or contingent upon that we finalize the whole part of the thing, the septic system design, all of that. And then whether or not that, that fails or passes is really on us, not on, not on the city, obviously. Um, and then also the, the acquisition of a water share. And so that would need to be part of the final that we bring at some, you know, future date. But this would at least allow us to proceed with the county um, and go to the next step that they require. So that's what we're asking. We're asking, uh, not for a final plat approval, but a preliminary plat approvals that we can move forward.
Thank you.
Question on the odd shape.
Uh, each has to have an acre.
And this is your driveway probably, right?
Yep, and so it's sixty feet from the one corner of the property to sixty feet from that, that keeps it from being a flat lot.
So what's the existing building on lot two?
Uh, a garage, and so that will go with the, uh, front, uh, property.
Yeah, so it's a good deal for you.
And well, not necessarily a good deal, because it's, it's gonna be my son
Right.
and his family, so there'll be conditions that I will apply to that property, probably more so than the city.
Buy a lot with a little garage, little some sort of fun equipment inside there. Your son's getting a good deal.
Uh, yeah, he's not gonna be able to use it for a while. Until I die. And we're not gonna let them sell it unless they sell it to us, actually, if anything ever happens, uh, because there'd be no context of me having somebody up there unless it was one of my kids. Um, so there's gonna be, obviously we're gonna do a legal agreement where if they go to ever sell it, they have to sell it to, to our trust.
Or you could, you could vest it in your trust.
That's true, yeah.
As a co-owner, and that way they couldn't sell it out from underneath you.
It's okay, we're good talking. As long as I don't have to pay for their mortgage.
No, you wouldn't. You would be on the mortgage, just own the property, and that way it could protect your interests.
They can.
I could help with that.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No, but that was a good insight. Any other questions?
I do it for free.
You can charge me too if you want.
No, I, I do it for
Thanks, David.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, moving on to item eleven. Uh, request for reasonable or unfortunate property being annexed to the city of Robert Nelson. Um, so this is the request, uh, R one nineteen's over three and four properties.
And this is for the, a, a property that was on number six of the twenty-one point six five acres.
Yeah, so, and he said that he'd already, uh, said all he had to say, so maybe that's
And it's only three, uh, three acres of the twenty-one acres, or is it three lots?
It's three lots.
Yeah, three and four properties.
Parcel number that would not be included in the R one nineteen would be uh, no Hyatt's, because he wants to remain, be able to use his property as he has. So at this time, he would just be requesting that you, um, forward it to the planning commission so that they can move forward on it.
Okay, thanks, Joey. A comment or discussion on that?
You don't take mine, I was just, and the planning commission does this already, but whenever we look at something, they always ask, what's the land around it?
Yeah, good point. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, item twelve, construction or burn to a property at two hundred east B four circle. Corbett, uh, the floor is yours.
So, you guys, you guys got this vision, but, who's up? The, the tutors, Joey, did you ever get that date?
No, but while you're talking, I will look for it.
So, so years ago, the city, the city council approved, um, cut the trees down in preparation for this, and so there was a lot of, I mean, Craig cut all the trees down with grant money last year sometime. We've already made steps in this direction. We couldn't go any further or didn't want to try to go any further until we had a good idea of what it would look like. Uh, Ted's company finished the, or did this, did this design. Uh, one of the things about this design is that for all intents and purposes, it balances. I mean, you're not hauling any dirt away, you're not pulling any dirt in, in order to build this burn. Any questions? All we're doing is massage in the dirt to, to make it work.
And maybe some background, uh, I don't know, maybe everyone's familiar with the circumstances, but, um,
So, when, when, when we chased, when we, after the avalanche and the studies that were done, the, the concerns with the natural hazards that we face because of where we're at. And all of those hazards are absolutely specific to the lot. So, not all of Woodland Hills is, is subject to avalanche, nor is all of Woodland Hills subject to debris flow or earthquake, you know, from known, from known faults. And so, the natural hazard assessment is absolutely specific to the piece of property. The, the hazards associated with that lot because of where it's at. So, when tutors, when Todd and Tiffany approached the city, it was, it was darn close to when that ordinance was changed. And so, they got caught in the middle of, um, doing their plans, hadn't submitted it yet. But then the code, then the code was implemented that required a, a natural hazard assessment. Well, that natural hazard assessment, um, requires them to deal with the avalanche themselves. I mean, if they want to build, then they have to deal with an avalanche or debris flow that is site-specific to them. Now, there's, I mean, you look at that, you look at that burn and the channel work that goes on there, and it's bigger than they are. And so, it, it was, I, I, I can't say impossible, because you can have anything in this world with money, right? But it was tough, tough to make it work. And so, a long time ago, they approached the city frustrated because, you know, they got caught right in the middle of all of this. Don't, don't have enough room to do it, the city didn't have enough money or money to do it, and so we batted the idea back and forth about letting the tutors do the work on city property. That would also be in anticipation of carrying that work through and doing all the work that needs to be done to mitigate the hazards, because it affects, it affects everybody. I mean, I don't know if you remember seeing the debris flow maps that were done? That, that debris flow or the water, it makes the mud, makes it all the way down to a hundred and twelve south. And it comes out of this gully, I mean, one of the flows comes out of this gully. And so, it absolutely affects everybody between the gully and a hundred and twelve south. Um, but again, the, the city, I, I mean, I don't know that the city is obligated to do it right now. But if the tutors wanted to do it, they were willing to work back and forth with the city and negotiate to get it done, but doing it on city property. So, the city council, back whenever it was, um, approved, cut the trees down, so we cut the trees down in two different stages. We cut the trees in the pile that's closest to the, uh, the little knoll that's right there, closest to the tank. And then, uh, we cut the trees down, the rest of the way down, almost if not all the way to the tutor's property line, um, in anticipation of finalizing the work that needed to be done, or the design that needed to be done, so that the work could be done. Is that, does that help?
Yeah, so David?
Yeah, that's very helpful. So, the only real question I have, I mean, you mentioned the tutors doing the work on city property. Do we have any cost estimates to the city on this work, or is that all gonna be borne by the tutor, or where, where do you cost estimates?
We haven't, we haven't worked that out yet. Not, not totally. Um, I, I don't, I mean, you know, I don't know if it's Pollyanna, but I think that we can get it done for pretty cheap, as long as we do it with a lot of volunteer help. In, in this, in all of this, I mean, you've seen that great big tracko that sits up there? Yeah, the red one, the red and gray one, Dave Taylor bought that tracko and is in the process of donating it to the city. And, and that, I mean, that'll be used up there, and so we're, I'm hoping that we can get it all done with volunteers.
Now, that, I, I do have some concern about, from my understanding of this was that it was a twenty-five thousand dollar price tag and that the tutors graciously were willing to pick that up and that it would be, and it would be engineered and it would be, so, I'm, I'm a little concerned that now I'm hearing that we're going to have to engage a volunteer force. And let me just say that I am fully in support of this being built. I think that this is something that the city frankly has an obligation to support. But it is something that, uh, you know, the price tag element of it, uh, being kind of a question mark does concern me now.
Right. This, this is the engineer. So, um, this, this design benefit, I mean, you're aware of the basin that, that is under design right now? So, the basin, the basin through NRCS or Watershed Ops five sixty-five or whatever it is, is the, is the federal program that is funding the, the basin that's being proposed up there. Now, the federal funding has only approved thirty percent planning and design, uh, up to thirty percent, but it's for planning and design. And so, once that thirty percent is approved, then they, the feds kick it back to the city, the city takes it through the public comment process. Once it goes through the public comment process, and if it gets approved, then the, the engineers will approach the feds for hundred percent design. Once it's approved for a hundred percent design, they do the design to full build out. Then, once that's done and approved, then they, then they approach the feds for a hundred percent construction. At least that's the, that's the anticipation right now because of what it's mitigating, what it's designed to mitigate. But that's a two or three-year process still from now.
And that's a, that's a separate, I mean, that's, that's a further build out, like this is, this is just to, uh, allow the tutors to build.
Yes, yes and no.
And then the, the flood mitigation would be something that could.
This is, this is part two of our, our first fire mitigation that we already have completed, this is part two of that, just called Watershed Off. So, yes, we're still in the thirty percent design phase, and then once that's approved, we go forward, but it's still a couple of years out. And so, this would be, um, something separate from that, um, and, uh.
Separate but intertwined.
Separate but intertwined.
So, this, this design comes at no cost to anybody except the feds, I guess we all pay for it anyway, right? But the, the, the federal program is paid for this design because this design benefits the, the basin design. The, all the work that, so you, you see the line, you see the line right here where the tree stopped. All the work that gets done up here in the gully is work that will be done if that basin gets approved. And that's, that's how we've used this design to benefit the project, the long-term project. And so, the work that gets done in the gully to open up the gully, um, it, it, you look at this right here and you see these white lines right across the side, those are all stations. And so, the very first station up here in the gully, um, ten plus, ten plus twenty, that's where it starts, ten plus twenty-five is the first, first station that shows a cut, cut and fill. And then, as you come out of that gully, well, right here, ten plus twenty is natural, we haven't done anything. Ten plus twenty-five, you're starting to cut. Ten plus fifty, you're cutting a bunch to open up that gully. And so, part of the problem with the, the avalanche is getting the snow to come out of that gully slow. It's like squirting a ketchup bottle, you got this little tiny orifice and you squeeze on that bottle and it squirts right out. You take the lid off and you try to squeeze it, it still comes out, but it comes out a lot slower. And when you can get it to slow down, you can control it a lot better. And so, this design that benefits tutors also benefits the project. And so, that, it, it's not just to benefit them, although it, it puts their build project two years faster than, than waiting for this to be funded a hundred percent for construction.
So, I, and, and that's terrific information, I still come back to what is going, like, what do we need to put in our budget?
Nothing.
To this.
I, I, I still maintain, it's not.
If we approve it tonight, I don't know if it's on the agenda, but if we were to approve it tonight, we're not approving any dollar amounts, we're not approving any city employee time. We're just approving that this burn can be built. Am I right or wrong?
No, you're, you're right. I mean, I, I, again, I haven't, we haven't penciled that out, but I'm hopeful that that's the way it'll go. And if it doesn't, then we didn't approve any funding for it, and so tutors, tutors have already agreed that they're not moving into their home, even, so the engineer that did their natural hazard assessment was CMT. Uh, CMT has offered to come up and do the, do all of the inspections for the testing. Uh, Ted, Ted's company has given us a price to do all of the survey work, um, all of the, the as-bills, everything that needs to be done on their side. And we're still, we're still between those two, we're still only at five thousand bucks. Tutors have offered, through what we estimate it would cost them to haul their dirt off, to, to put that money towards the fuel and equipment or whatever is necessary to build this, to build this burn. Uh, VanCon has offered to drop off a compactor and leave it for two months and forget where it's at until, until we call them to come back and get it. And so, I, I, I'm still, I'm still hopeful that, that, uh, this is not gonna cost even the twenty-five thousand, but it's not going to cost the city.
And Todd and Tiffany, I, uh, we, we spoke earlier, uh, is this consistent with what? Because I, I know that the tutors have been, uh, through, uh, a arduous ordeal in trying to get their property built. And I'm very sympathetic to that. This is consistent with what you are hoping to get from this meeting too. I just want to make sure that there's no surprises on either side of this. So, what, what Corbett is proposing is consistent with the objectives that you hope to gain from, from this loan as well.
Absolutely, there's, there's a lot of detail that we don't need to go into, but I, I personally appreciate Corbett for his work and, and I think Dorals are involved in Ted, because in, a lot of people, uh, in, in, I, I think Corbett's got to get the point, uh, that we, we realize that anybody downstream from Rod Hollow is positively affected by this, it's just not the tutor, so it makes you nervous, like, the tutor's burn. Oh, my gosh, we have our own burn.
Put a sign on it.
Yeah, but I, I hope, I hope that it's a community project, this goes back to a, a report in two thousand and five. That was to ever to the city, there's nothing to do with this, this is before we even bought our property. And so, the city did know and has known about this for some time and probably has some obligation to make this happen. Or maybe shouldn't have approved all the people that have bought lots and built houses. So, my guess is that if nothing is done, we have a big mound of dirt that is now a mud hazard to my land. And if nothing is done and something, uh, horrible happened, and that, uh, slide did come down Rod Hollow in the left turn, which we did build a burn to protect the wells, which is the right thing to do. But whenever you protect something, you divert somewhere else, and so it probably has increased the risk, not only for us, but for burgers, with tailors, or anybody down the road to Corbett's Point, all the way down to a hundred and twelve. Uh, so there's probably ten plus homes already built and lives already living, uh, after the report had been developed in two thousand and five, so. But the bottom line for us is this is a win-win, th- this is the right thing to do. We're happy to, uh, for, uh, for pay the twenty-five thousand dollars and obviously this is our problem, we've been trying to move here for six years. We love it, it's a great neighborhood, I love being a burger neighbor, uh, and we like all of you, we appreciate what you've all done. So, uh, we're absolutely behind it, and, and there's also a great opportunity to, uh, that I know, uh, has been discussed to generate some income for a phase two and haul dirt off and that kind of thing, but it's not complicated. We're willing to forefund twenty-five thousand dollars, it costs that much, it's fine. And, uh, we can get the burn built, it's not gonna take a long time, the dirt's already there, we already hauled it. And we have a mover, and we have people ready, ready to move it, and we have a compactor, so I think it could solve a lot of problems in this process.
Okay, thank you. Carrie?
Question is, um, okay, so we have the plants done, everything's right, we're, we're excited to have you as our neighbors, but who actually is going to be doing the work, and that's what the twenty-five thousand dollars pays for, an independent contractor to do this work?
We already have a first volunteer.
Do we, do we worry about, I mean, you gotta say it, the liability of volunteers on city property?
We've already had volunteers, Jeff and I cut down a lot of the trees.
Yeah. I'm just, just saying.
We still need to work those issues out, I mean, obviously, but.
We could have a sound waiver, I mean, that is, uh, that, I'm not trying to be manipulative, but that is a possibility, I mean, you have people that are volunteer.
Well, and, and we, we have snowplow drivers, we have people drive the city tractor, you know.
But they're covered under something, under, we have, we have insurance that covers volunteers at a certain level, so I'm just wondering. So, I guess what I'm saying is, would these volunteers be covered like other volunteers, but I don't think so.
Okay.
So, can we then figure out, uh, uh, the waiver so that we know that people really truly understand that this is their, their service volunteer hours?
And then my lives are at risk, right?
Or that people using the equipment are trained to use the equipment, right? I mean, those are things that we.
We're not gonna let you drive the tracko.
I don't think that's a question.
I know how to drive a tracko. Yeah, I know.
There'll be a train, there'll be a training class, and if you attend all forty hours, then you can drive the tracko.
Okay, thanks, Carrie, good point.
I mean, a- again, if it's an issue of, of, of not calling them volunteers because they get paid, I'll put up the first hundred bucks. Pay them a buck a day and they're not a volunteer anymore, right? Isn't that what you guys make?
Yeah.
But I, I mean, obviously, there's more information, but what I didn't want to do is, is I didn't want to, I didn't want to just, you know, we went, I mean, city council approved this a long time ago, but didn't have the details that we have now. And I don't, I don't want to do anything without everybody's support. And, and if, and if somebody doesn't support it, then let's talk about it. And let's, let's see if we can work it out, and, and if, if we can, then let's move ahead.
I just want to make sure the people who are, I mean, I support it, I just want to make sure that those who are volunteers understand it, and we understand it as city property. Um, there's a, a little bit different than just having people come over to your house and help you, you know, pick up sticks or whatever, right? Um, so this is a little bit different, and there is having equipment involved, and it doesn't, isn't covered like our snowplow drivers or some others. So, that's why I'm just bringing that up, is just to make sure that, that we are on the level, just like we were just saying, are we all on the same level, just make sure we are.
And Carrie, uh, with the mitigation project, I mean, those were largely a volunteer force here, right? We have them assigned waivers, so.
Yeah, a few, a few.
We probably got, yeah, I, so I, I think that that would be a pretty easy fix for that type of, uh.
And we didn't let, we couldn't let certain people use, um, equip, certain equipment.
Okay, okay, then.
You know, I've had the opportunity.
And Carrie, I saw you too, I, I, I'll, I'll get to you in a second.
You know, I've had the opportunity to spend hours and hours talking to Corbett through this process, and I am one, very impressed and grateful for the tutors, your patience.
Yeah.
Thank you, we're excited to have you. But I just think this is gonna be a fabulous, fabulous project, and there's some other great upsides as well going down in the future, so.
Yeah, there's, there's, uh, Corbett's been, uh, very innovative in terms of, you know, trying to, uh, look at some ways to build out the next phases of the Corbett and Ted, I, I suppose, I don't want to leave anybody out, but to, um, generate some. Generate some potential revenues for the city and also as part of the uh the build out of the next phase.
Planning Commission, public hearing. I I I would, I would prefer that this was, I mean. We call it transparent. It's not like we're hiding anything, but I would prefer that we take every opportunity. To to just make that, make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on, that we're that we're trying to. You know, we're trying to protect people. Again, it's not just the tutors. It's everybody that's in the way of that, you know, whatever it is, debris flow or avalanche. But does this need to go to planning commission? And if it does, that 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 remanding or that direction needs to come from this body.
I think it has to just because it's land use and it's city land.
It's city land, but it's not changing any zone.
What do you think, Wayne?
I I'm not aware of anything that would require it to go to planning commission, but we can look into it. If it does, we're we're happy to. Put on the agenda.
I'm just gonna say that I do have some concerns with this. Batting it around and debating it excessively, though. I mean, I think that this is something that. Has been batted around and debated for a long time. So. I would say if there is no clear directive to kick it back to the planning commission, I would say we should vote on that.
Yeah, just just to keep in mind, the definition of land use is not that you use the land. That's, it's that you're changing the use of the land. Meaning you're changing the zoning, you're changing the way that it's functioning, something like that. That would be land use.
Residents who are very um cautious of our land use. And I just wanna make sure that we.
No, that's a great point.
Things.
No, I agree.
But if it's not required, then I think this could.
Okay, uh, Sherry.
Yeah, my my question, I guess it is, Corbin, can you go back to the area? The different stations that are there, because you and I talked in ten and. Where is the pile of dirt right now?
This, where these contours right here are really spread apart, right here where the contours are tight is the slope. And right here where the contours are far apart is the flat. That's the flat part up on the top.
Okay, so that's the dirt that's gonna be used to make the burn?
No. So this berm right here, you you see this, you see this design, these these cross sections. These cross sections, the dotted line is the native grade. And the the solid line is the is the design. Contour, the diet design grade, what that what that cross section is gonna look like when you're done. And so in in this design right here, th- this number right here. Means that there's only a hundred and seventy-three cubic yards of excess material. And so that that material, you can, you can, you can waste a hundred and seventy-three yards just by taking the. The toe of this slope and taking it out a few feet in in this whole thing. And so this balances for all intents and purposes. But all of these cross sections right here are represented in in these right here.
And where does the easement road come up to?
The the road. That road's coming up right here. And so that berm stops right here before it gets to the road. It feather, it feathers back out. Down to nothing or back to native grade right there.
So it will never go across the.
Not not this one.
Not this one.
Not this one. Well, the runoff, yeah, the runoff's gonna, I mean, we're, this this design widens that gully quite a bit. Right here. And so it takes that. You go up in there and there's that outcrop that kind of pinches off the gully.
Yeah.
Right at the mouth of the gully. All that comes out so that the snow can come out easier and straighter and slow down sooner. So you you get an avalanche and the avalanche run, you get the runout. It's called runout on an avalanche where a runout, as soon as it starts to flatten out compared to the steep slope it's coming off of. As soon as it starts to flatten out, then it slows down and stops. And and we saw that in the in the two thousand and seven avalanche. It it didn't even make it much past the road, the first one that came out. So.
All right, any other questions? Okay. So Jody, this item thirteen, the proposed resolution, I need to be scheduled to include cost of appeal officer hearings. I I do not have, um, so Craig is supposed to be sending me. The information regarding the. The potential candidate, so I don't have a sense for fees. Did you have something else in mind with that?
So the only thing that I put in was actual costs incurred by the city.
Okay.
Which gives us the ability to charge. We'll just have to keep track of the invoices, the time spent. And then maybe require a deposit and we'll go off of that deposit. But right now in the fee schedule, it just says actual costs incurred by the city.
Yeah.
The other change in the fee schedule, which I didn't get in before putting the packet on, was the cost of. The ADU application that you guys adopted and accepted at February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. And that was three hundred dollars.
Well, that was a deposit, but it was one.
Well, that's what the um. For the section.
Yeah, but we we wanted it worded specifically as a deposit.
Do you want that to be as a deposit with actual costs that occurred against it?
That was what Laura wanted.
This is what I want. But I'm not.
Well, then we we can.
That's a, I thought we voted on.
amend. So when you make a motion to either approve. If you make a motion to approve the resolution, you can amend the city fee schedule to state that. And we can put that in the city fee schedule.
And so so if it's less than three hundred, it will be less, but if it was more.
Yeah, we don't want the expectations. They're gonna get money back, but we don't.
Well, especially especially those that who already have built in to their original house. You know, and even the apartments that was already inspected originally, if they haven't changed anything, would be quick.
Yeah. Like mine, you would not, nothing would need to be done.
And others would need to uh. Might need to do a bunch of things.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that. Any other comments or discussion on that? Item fourteen, discussion on the city vacating a portion of Rose and Thousand Oaks Platte. And dedicating uh the dedicated portion to Summit Creek Development. Ben, thanks for being here. Take it away.
Sure. Jody's pulling up this map and I'll help. So thank you for giving us a few minutes. We just wanted to present some kind of the what and the why. Of this request and how it might uh benefit the city and us. And just give you sort of some groundwork. And as you, you know, do your deliberation. Hope you this will help. And so what we're asking for. Um, and this this map should be in your packet. And then Jody's also gonna pull it up on the screen for you. What we're asking for is that the city transfer ownership of these two portions of roads to Summit Creek. And the reason that we're asking for this, there's there's a couple, primarily, uh, we would like to redesign those. Sections of roads just to help facilitate our, you know, future development going forward. Also, those those two roads are included in Thousand Oaks Plats D and F. And as you're all aware, those those two plats have roads and infrastructure that are in various stages of completion or I guess incompletion. Some of that areas, some of those areas have been incomplete for probably close to fifteen years. And there's property owners that I think are probably frustrated to a certain degree that they haven't been able to access their lots and build homes. And so one of the things that we would also include in this request is Summit Creek would. Propose to finish all of that infrastructure road work. As part of this request, if the if the request is granted, of those roads being transferred to Summit Creek. So this would, um, how would this benefit the city? So uh, there's a couple of things in our mind. Uh, one, it would, it would. Resolve the city from any financial obligation, just whatever they're responsible for to finish, because we would take that off. And so relieve the financial burden the city would have related to finishing any of those portions of road in in DNS. The landowners would be able to now access their, when it's done, they'd be able to access their property, build their homes. The city would be able to, you know, collect the permit fees, utility impact fees, utility fees, whatever those are associated with with each home. And so that would be a benefit as well. And then also the city would, those two particular sections in particular. The city, if that was granted, would no longer be responsible for their maintenance and snow removal. And so there'd be some cost savings, even though they're not. Huge portions, but there would be some cost savings for the city.
So you're saying there would be private roads. So are we anticipating that you're requesting gates at at on this side of Eagle's Nest and then at both sides of?
No, um, we are, gates are part of our plan on the private sections, but as far as Loafer is concerned, it would. Loafer would be redesigned or wouldn't connect with Bear Hollow anymore. Um, it would still connect down there on Summit Creek Drive, and that's where we would propose to put the gate.
Carrie, turn to it. Loafer would turn into a cul-de-sac.
Oh, I was just gonna say, where would it?
Yeah, and I apologize. I don't have that master plan.
That's okay. So so downstairs by block one sixty-one, that would be, that would be a cul-de-sac instead of the two.
The curvature.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I could just. So.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah, so basically, if we just go like this, and there would be cul-de-sac, and then these lots would be reconfigured around the cul-de-sac. This goes away. That that portion right there goes away.
Yeah. And then Carrie, the cul-de-sac currently exists on Eagle Nest. Would no longer be a cul-de-sac, which is the reason we need to change the nature of the road.
Right.
That that goes down with the further development.
Okay, so that would no longer be a cul-de-sac, so.
It would be a free road. That's correct.
But it would be gated at this top side by one, by one one twenty.
Right, one one nineteen one twenty. Yeah, and so uh. There are um, Loafer has its currently plaid. It does include. Utility easements and there is water and sewer running through there now. Those would stay. We wouldn't be requesting those or moving those at all. Those would stay and remain in service. Those future homes would connect to those. And so all the utilities and the easements would remain the same. So uh, I I didn't, I have a a turnout here of what we understand to be the remaining work. For each of those sections of road, if you'd like to see it, it just kind of outlines what's left to be done on each of those sections of road.
Ben, did you have a question on other bits? Did you have a question? I don't wanna.
I made five, not six copies.
Yeah, that's okay.
Um, Ben, what's the plan on Eagle's Nest? You guys gonna change the grade of that?
So. The plan is to just continue that through. We would just follow the existing topography and grade where needed to, to keep it within the requirements for slope. Yeah, yeah.
And is it gonna join anywhere down?
Yeah, man, I should have had this up. Well, I think it goes around. Um, I I was given ten minutes, so I I don't wanna go over.
John, I appreciate your.
Yeah, yeah. So as far as the benefit to the city, Wayne did a lot of work in the planning commission and Corbin as well, trying to value what these roads would be for the city. That's in your packet, as well as the overall cost to complete everything that Summit Creek would take on as part of this request. And we talked to Wayne about this. We have a little different differing of opinion on valuing the roads. And this may not be the exact place to do it, but we, you know, we could talk about. You know, if if that's important as far as how it's presented to the public, you know, how we value the roads versus how Wayne and Corbin do.
That seems a little bit high.
So the the, yeah, and I, to be fair to Wayne, I don't wanna monopolize this conversation. I know he has his point of view as well, but um. We, as far as the water lines and the sewer lines being included in the value, we're not requesting to take those back. And so our opinion was that those would not be included in the value to the city, because you're not getting rid of them, like, they're still yours. As opposed to the roads we are asking to take back. And I could be wrong on that, but that was. Anyway. As far as the value of those roads, the cost to complete is in there as well in your packet.
Then did you give us this request information sheet or did that come from Wayne?
I put that together and I sent it to Wayne, um, and then he shared it also with with the mayor and Jody.
Okay.
And so again, that's granted, that's our, that's our creation. So there may be some things in there that don't totally agree with, but that's the best of our our knowledge, all the facts related to this request.
Then I have a question. Um, maybe it goes to Wayne. If we have private roads in the city. How do we manage their development that they're up to the standard that we have as well for private roads? They're supposed to be as wide and and function or constructed like old roads by the city. Am I correct?
Correct. Uh, and the development agreement spells that out, that any roads which they made. Are made according to certain to our city standards with the.
Yeah, and we would still have to follow all the preliminary and final plat approvals and construction drawings. It would all go through the regular city process. To make sure that we're following the standards.
Nothing really changes from a development standpoint. The private road just allows them to put the gates up and then.
And.
Well, if you can figure it's kind of.
It looks like they would be able to direct where the roads went, which like you're gonna make move.
They do that already.
Yeah.
So in reconfiguring the lots for those two sections where the road will continue and connect or the cul-de-sac then. Will the overall density of the project be the same? I mean.
You, yes, on on the Loafer portion, the total lot numbers will stay the same. On Eagle Nest, it will change a little bit because we're cutting through um in that whole area, but that's all, that's all hasn't even been planned yet.
That's what I'm just asking, because it will come to us eventually.
But it still has to follow the same zoning.
Right.
Rules that already exist. So again, it it's a little hard maybe to. But building wise, private roads don't make like a difference. The change in the configuration can make some difference, but honestly, it's even, I looked at it, I was like.
So just in interest of time, because I wanna respect the time you gave me, a couple of final thoughts. Just based on the numbers that Wayne put together and the cost and everything, we feel like the the cost that we would take on to complete. Exceeds the value. And so we feel like it's, you know, it's in kind of everyone's benefit to go ahead and grant the request. Of course, you guys would, you know, do your due diligence and make that decision. Um, as far as timing goes, I understand that there would need to be a public hearing, which takes a fourteen day notice. You know, next city council meeting is two weeks from now, so we probably missed that window. It, which means we'd have to wait for another two, so four weeks from today would be the potentially the earliest that we could have the public hearing. We would ask, um, if you would consider if, you know, depending on how you guys deliberate on this, if if. Possible to maybe have a special session, public hearing in between the two. And the reason we ask is it's springtime, contractors are getting locked down. We have a contractor on site now. And we would love to keep him busy rather than lose him. And so literally every day counts at this point. So. Thank you for your time. And we're here. Steve's here. Bucky's on. If you have any questions, we're here, so.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Yeah, this would be, this would be a, yeah.
No, we we've already had the public hearing.
Okay.
Well, it did, it did require ones, I understand.
To make it a road is not required by our planning commission, uh, public hearing, just to come with require city council. And it could be done if the council wanted to in time for the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-seven meeting.
So I just have a.
April fourteenth meeting, twenty twenty-two.
I mean, my my main concern is just the valuation aspect. I mean, I I don't know where you guys came up with your numbers. I know that, you know, Wayne. Put together ours and I'm I'm sure they're well considered. I I just don't know how squishy they are, you know, in terms of. You know, your evaluation versus ours. That that'll be the big one for me in terms of.
Mayor, man, let me comment.
Oh, yeah.
So W- Wayne, Wayne took a different approach than than what we did. And and I I think you can, you can. Visit and we're glad to bring, you know, our appraiser in to to talk about it. But as as Ben mentioned, there there's two things that that are in Wayne Wayne's appraisal as it relates to the value of the road. But is, as Ben mentioned, there, there's two things that, that are in Wayne, Wayne's appraisal, as it relates to the value of the road. That, um, increased the value of, of that road dramatically, which are the value of the water and the value of sewer. And as Ben had highlighted, we're not asking for that to be transferred back to us. Additionally, the value that is in the water and in the sewer was spent by the prior developer, and so on the. The road sections that we're asking to have returned to, sort of having turned back to Summit Creek. There, it knows, as far as I know, Jody can probably clarify, there have been no city funds expended related to those, so. It's not like you're giving up something that you spend money to develop.
Right.
You're, you're giving something back to a developer that a developer gave to you.
And I don't know what independent value it would have.
Yeah, and, yeah, and the, the other thing I think is, it relates to the devaluation that we didn't really go into. And I, I don't know whether Wayne did or not, is the relinquishment of liability. Right, because that, that in and of itself is probably more valuable than, than the road itself as an asset. Right, because the road itself is an asset, really just has the asphalt, right, and the, and the property value, but. We're also not changing the characterization from a road to a sellable lot. Right, and so what we're trying to do is effectively keep the nature of that area. The same, therefore, you get to use a road value to. Extrapolate to an additional road value, as opposed to taking a road value and turning it into a commercial or residential lot. That, there's, there's a change in valuation there.
Thank you, yeah.
So, um, when we discussed this before, just as part of our, um, the developers' regiment. We, we mentioned that there were two properties that are. Right close to where you wanted to put a gate, did you guys move where you were thinking the gate would be?
Yeah, we're moving them down the gate, we're proposing, sorry, Mayor, I'm trying to look at. Moving it to where it would be on the, if this grant, wherever it's granted, we would move the gate to that portion, so that we wouldn't have to try.
So we're not affecting those.
Correct.
So tonight would be just to, would not be proposing to, uh, vote on this, but voting to have the public hearing on the twelfth. All right, and I just, just, well, I didn't mean to say vote, but we're not voting on it, but we can make the recommendation to have. The public hearing on the twelfth, which would be our first meeting, Jody says that would be in, in line, I don't think we should have it a week early, because it is spring break and we have a lot of our residents out.
So, so, sorry, Dave, yeah, we've got it clear, there is, you're correct, so one fourteen. Would be, uh, a lot that we don't own on the, on Eagle Nest, and so you're correct, we would have to get their approval.
And we, and we have been trying to contact that on our day, so we think part of the public notice process. We would forward a copy of this and say, hey, by the way, this really affects you, so you need, you know, you need to pay attention to it, yeah, so.
Okay, so just so that we're all clear, lot one fourteen, there's not a home there.
No, it's a vacant lot.
But it is owned by someone other than.
Yeah, Carter.
And that would end up behind the gate. So they have to be okay with that.
Thank you, okay, so Corbett and Mannequin.
Wayne, Wayne and I have talked about it, but we haven't vetted out the issues with utilities. We've got sewer manholes, and then we've got sewer manholes that come off the Eagle Nest. That go down through the trees and tie into the portion of Loafer Drive that's gonna be abandoned. Um, and so you, I think, I just, I wanna make it, you know, public that we need to work those things out too.
Sure.
The sewer, the sewer lines, what you're saying?
But, but just, just to be clear, Corbett, I think the design that we have is not interfering with those manholes.
The only, I mean, the issue it creates for me is, you can jet, when you, when you jet sewer, you can jet from this manhole to this one. And from this one up to that same one, but if you have two that are out on trees, you can't get to them. You can't jet through a manhole to the next manhole.
So you're talking so with access to do maintenance or service, yeah, so the way we designed the, the, the overall plan was to keep those easements in place, so.
Well, yeah, the only thing I don't like about easements is now you've got somebody that's gone in and landscaped the property. And I'm gonna come in there with a back truck and beat the, tear it all up, right?
Also, I think you guys need to get, you guys need to get together.
Yeah, a- and that's all I'm saying, is let's, just, let's vet it out.
All right, thank you.
All right, Wayne.
If the city council absolutely says, no, we're not gonna do this, there's no point in having a public hearing. But if the city council's interested in pursuing it further, seeing what the public wants, in whatever input the public gives. Then go ahead and schedule a public hearing, so that was the idea behind waiting till tonight, your decision, what you wanted to do. If your direction is to have a public hearing, then, uh, Jody can schedule it next spot or two time and they'll go from there, so that was the idea behind. Waiting to see what, what your, what the council views were on this, whether to have the hearing.
Okay, and so, it's just as far as the mechanics of that, though, we're not having a vote on it, so.
Yeah, not to, not denying.
We would just be sort of voicing our support of that piece of it, I guess.
Public hearing, well, you just be voicing that you're willing to hold a public hearing, that's all you're saying, because you're willing to hold a public hearing for the public to comment on.
Okay, well. Let's say, does anybody have any objections to the public hearing moving forward? Yeah, I hear it, I also have to act, but that doesn't mean your vote doesn't matter.
I would let you know if I did something. Yes.
All right, well, so that, uh, I guess settles that.
And, and, and Mayor, one, one other thing, we invite members of city council as they go through their, their packet, if they didn't get, you know, full exposure to it. Reach out to Ben, reach out to myself, we're glad to sit down with you and talk about it, move this with Corbett, make sure we. We've circled back with him, who's been, been Wayne to become, I think, best friends at this point, so.
Wait a minute here.
They're spending a lot of time together, let's put it.
I just might say that, that Summit has a beautiful map. Of what the future development is supposed to look like now in their clubhouse. And so if you go down there sometime, and you can see what, what the future development is. Is at least at this point going to look like.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
And maybe use your exercise facilities too. Okay, uh, with that, we'll move on to sheriff's report, Debbie Dutton, glad to have you here, and, uh. Where is yours?
There's, there's not a lot to report on for the, the, the month of February. Uh, we responded to about, uh, forty-two details. Most of those just extra patrols, about seventeen of those were extra patrols. The other ones were just kind of, um. We had one accident involving injuries, a lot of the agency assists or assisting other agencies that are. Usually they got an abandoned vehicle, and they need us to contact the owner of the vehicle to find out what's going on with it. Uh, been inspections, welfare checks, um, a couple of suspicious activities. And then I would just encourage residents, if they're, uh. At night, lock their doors up, garages shut them, we did have one home that's, uh, under construction of Summit Creek that, um. The homeowner left two doors unlocked, they were like days from moving into it. And, uh, they had quite a few items stolen out of the home. So, kinda unique, because the, the garage doors aren't on the home, and they had like twenty thousand dollars worth of other equipment in the garage, it wasn't touched. But they had lighting and sound systems for the home that was inside, they, they just took them, they, but they weren't even out of the box yet, they just walked in and walked out with them, so.
I wanna say thank you for providing that, we did include it in your report in our newsletter, city newsletter, and the extra part that you. That you give us just as an update or as a, a special message to the citizens, so thank you.
You're welcome, I'll try to keep up on that.
Yeah.
Yes, a question I have regarding our snow days. And I know that this plowing is not your job, and the legislature works for the county. And Woodland Hills looks fantastic.
Yes.
And then I hit that roundabout, and there's like five to six cars off the side of the road, because it hasn't been touched. Do you guys have to respond to those, I mean? How does word get back to the county crews that, guys, you gotta be up here?
Um, I can try to put a word in for them, um.
Or have.
And contract with us and let us finish the, the road a little bit further.
Of course, that are going, yep, yeah.
I think we could, yeah, that has.
That is something that we could look at too.
When there was the ice on there that last time, there were so many, especially those high school kids, you know?
That's one thing, and Salem does come up quite a ways into there, so. But I do hear from a lot of people that live outside of Woodland Hills, that the streets here in Woodland Hills are well plowed.
You started speaking, you said forty-two details and something about extra patrols, what does that mean?
So extra patrol, that's anytime that a sheriff deputy comes into the city, we'll call out an extra patrol, so it logs, um.
Is that other than you, or?
Yes, no, that's, that's other than me.
Oh.
So I just tell all the deputies, when you come into the city, the patrol, no matter what time of the, of, of day it is, just so I can. Report back to you guys that we're in the city.
Thanks.
Thanks, well, we appreciate all your work here, been talking to a lot of deputies lately. With the sheriffs race and et cetera, and they'll always throw your name out there, see what they say. They're trying to decide if they like you or Jack better.
That's probably Jack.
It's, it's a, it's one of those tug wars that's happening in the office, so.
They don't wanna see me, they don't wanna see the canine, so.
All right, thank you, you're welcome. Okay, uh, city council reports. Council member Gilliard, uh, nine one one service district, so Utah Valley suddenly.
Okay, so, uh, nine one one service district, we did have a rate increase this next coming fiscal year. Um, so we went up about a thousand dollars there for dispatch services.
Half dollars from Woodland Hills?
Yes, so that's an increase, I believe it went from eight something to nine something. Um, Utah Valley Solid Waste District, I actually was at a convention last week, gun science for that. Um, had a great experience there, nothing like a bunch of landfill and solid waste guys. But it was very, very, very insightful, um, there was a lot of really cool things that were going on, um. One thing that was a big theme was recycling, and what they're trying to do in the state for recycling. Um, in the past, they have spoken about how recycling often was, you know, bundled up and shipped to China. Um, and a few number of years ago, that that was, that was ceased. Um, and then it came back to us, and then we were putting it in the landfill. Um, and so recently, though, they're making even more effort to increase the amount that we are recycling. Because it gives us a few kind of economies of scale when it comes to what we're able to recycle. And one of the benefits we've been able to see is that with cardboard, we're now, as, as, you know. Bob Oatley reported, you know, last year, we now can have, um, pizza boxes put in recyclables. Um, whereas before they couldn't. Um, they basically said if it, if it upholds the shake test, it's good to go, so if you can shake the pizza box with no sound. It can go in the, the recycling.
Shake test, I have a question, because a lot of residents, well, I don't understand a lot, but. Most of our residents get a lot of boxes from Amazon, and the recycling box thing is still like for one day. Now, is there any, um, thought process of us having a recycling bin just for boxes? We did, and we do at Christmas time sometimes, we put it here in the city center pretty much. Um, just for boxes, because I know we get a garage full of boxes, only so much is in our bin.
Yeah, break them down.
I know, but you still, if you shove them in there too much, though. And because you shoved it in, it all stays in there, and they just put it down and drive away.
So I think that'd be a cost, um, a cost analysis, because it would.
Right, it is an extra expense, but our citizens utilize it a lot during the holidays. And is the, the thing about leaving it here was that, that we had the ability to keep an eye on it, when we had it other places. It became a, a wildfire, or people were shoving other kinds of trash in, or if you said, when we said boxes only, wrote down boxes only. They, they're utilized.
Carrie, we still had a problem last time it was here, though, remember, we had to go out and pick all this garbage up that people threw on the side of it, thinking that. Well, it's overfall, and it's your job to put it in, and it's, we don't have employees to.
Yeah, I think personally, from listening to them, there's just a difference, um, when it comes to just cost. Uh, right now, recycling, and it's just more expensive than, than landfill. And one of the primary reasons is the fact that Utah, Arizona, Nevada, Wyoming, we've got some of the cheapest garbage. Um, in the nation, because one, it's just cheaper to hold landfills here. Um, we also, it was really cool, we learned a lot about how they maintain our landfills. So I know one of the things that we're hearing across the nation is that methane is coming off of our landfills, which is drastically increasing to the greenhouse gases. Um, and actually, that's not true here in Utah, at least. Because our landfills are, are having all that methane, for the most part, is being captured and piped into our natural gas grid. So it's really, there's some really, really cool things that's going on, and. I have never been to, I've been to a lot of conventions throughout my professional career, and I've never been to one that is so. Obsessed with their trade. They are passionate about solid waste, it was a fun term. This is a different solid waste. I did, I'm not part of the, the sewage board, um, and then public works, we have met since.
Okay, thanks, Ben. All right, council member Keston, C W B B and Public City.
Yeah, um, I'm happy to announce, just fresh off of information from the chief. We have a chipping plan for the first week of June. And if needed, they'll do two weeks of chipping, so, uh. Carrie, you will hear from the chief about the rules and suggestions that will make it go smoother.
Yeah, he asked us not to advertise about it yet, because we still have probably a, a storm or two, and not, and we don't want people putting their. Their branches out that might hinder the snow plowing efforts, so, yeah, he asked us not, not to put anything in by yet, but he will get me something when he's ready.
One of the keys is, is they'll make one pass through the city. So, once your pile is gone, you can't put another pile up there in the same spot, but you can get to David's house. So that's, that's good news.
Do you have a flyer or anything for your fireworks going out?
We do, we do.
Okay, you can get that on your list to get to me, so I can start. Yeah, I would like to start putting it in the newsletter in April, so those people aren't, don't think about it.
Okay, um. We had a little bit of mutual aid going on today, there was a fire at Maple Mountain School. And it, it took all of the fires in Spanish Fork, it stayed, just took a lot of, of resources. And so, uh, four of us went down and stationed in Spanish Fork, and normally we go down there and it stays quiet. But today, we went on a three-car pileup, so, uh, us four went to that and had them on our own with their end, so we said. It was, it went well, so, mutual aid is, is alive and well in Utah, yeah, and it's, it's great for us, they help us do.
Can I ask, do you still want the citizens to record their hours on the city website, is that going to offset our insurance still?
It offsets, uh, it offsets some of our, uh, funding for grants, and, uh, it's important for us to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Put that in on your list, so that you can send it all to me.
Thank you for asking.
Okay, thanks to all, council member one.
Um, so for city events and volunteers, um, I have a question, if. I know in the past you've done the Easter Bunny, is that something? Do we need to plan for that? Is that, was that you?
No, I don't know. You know, we are willing to do that, if, if you, we would like to do it again, um.
That's my question.
We were waiting to be asked before getting offered, so we haven't really decided. We've talked about it, like, is anybody, I'm, I'm fishing to see if any firefighters are available. I think it's the Saturday before the Easter.
Sixteenth.
You do it, sixteen.
Sixteenth of April, that Saturday, the day before, um. Sixteenth of April, that Saturday, day before, um, in that slew of, of other things, and we kind of started it when, at, when COVID came. Because kids couldn't go to Easter egg hunts, so.
So if, if you're interested, contact us and we can talk.
I just didn't.
Hey, you need to clarify, we may actually means you and us actually.
I think the citizens really like it.
I will.
I think the citizens really like it, if we can do it.
We can find, it was a good day.
You know, Christmas, Easter, and then our Halloween.
We, my, 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 uh, my challenge is the funding for the handouts, so that's something to, to consider.
Candies.
Yeah.
Because we give away about five, five.
We give away a little.
About, was it about five hundred, right?
Yeah.
Right, so five or six hundred candies. They have to be individually wrapped and we, in the past, we've bought them, uh, through Walmart. You know, those tall things that look like they have a lot of candy in it, but not really.
Probably.
Yeah, 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 those cases. And they have a little button on the end, and so we've gotten, we've gotten some of those where I don't know if Walmart donated them or if a citizen donated them.
A citizen somewhere near my house.
Donated them.
Packaged all the little, um, little bag of candies.
I know, uh, a councilwoman that's no longer here, he also sent these same kids hundred and sixty dollars a month towards when candy was needed or something, that's what he told me once, so. Anyway.
I think you need some.
I think we could get some, we could probably pull some.
If you can get the firefighters on board, then maybe the rest of us can keep that.
I'll come and ask the chief, I'll stop by. Okay, um, and then I did speak with, um, someone in the community to help with the volunteers, to help manage the volunteers and to kind of keep them going, and he also liked the idea of maybe doing a spotlight. So I've got to get that going. Um, and then I'm gonna do my other little part, and then we can turn it over to Sherri for Parks and Trails. Um, just for South Utah Valley Animal Shelter, um, they are having a budget increase as well. They have to do some salary, um, increases, and so they, they didn't quite have all the numbers, we met this last week for a board meeting. They didn't have all the final numbers, but we're going to have a special meeting next week. And she's supposed to have the final numbers, it won't be a huge impact. It'll just be a little bit, but they, um, they only have four full-time employees and those full-time employees, um, need a raise, so. So there will be a slight budget increase from them as well. Um, and then I guess back to the events of volunteers, just I do have someone who I've asked to be over Woodland Hills, they said they're they're turning it over, so hopefully, I'm not gonna say who because I don't want anyone to sway them, so. So, anyway, that's all. And then I'm gonna turn the time over to Sherri for Parks and Trails.
I can't tell you how grateful I am to be here tonight to start this discussion, um, relative to the use, access, and hopefully enforcing some ordinances, uh, regarding the switchback trail. So mayor, I'm grateful that we're on the agenda and we can begin to start, to start, um, a discussion to help set these parameters. Uh, PTR was asked by the previous city council to make two recommendations. One was on the switchback trail use, and the other one had to do with parking on Deep Forest Circle. How the parking on Deep Forest Circle came up, and we got this information in the packet, those Jeff and I actually called former mayor Prey about the conditions up on Deep Forest Circle in the winter time. Um, this is before Taylor's construction, I think it goes back to the winter of twenty twenty. Most of the people were from out of town, and they were sleigh riding down the easement. They were parked in front of the fire hydrant, they were all over the circle. Bob actually came up and tried to clown, got stuck. I called the sheriff, he came out and nobody moved. So mayor Prey asked us to make some kind of recommendation having to do with parking on Deep Forest Circle primarily for the pedestrians that access the trail and also usage during the winter time. Now, right now, Taylors are building and there is a lot of parking going on up there, and Tullers are gonna be building and there will be parking, so. What I'd like to present to you tonight is solely on the parking on Deep Forest Circle, and if we could table the use of the switchback to another time, uh, John Wallace was gonna present that tonight, but he's been off in Spanish Fork all day, manning their fire department. He may be home now, I'm not sure, but if we could postpone that to another time.
And Sherri, just to, uh, you got my email, so I was not planning and, and we, we.
No, not to make a decision, no.
Okay, so, yeah, we just wanna hear the presentation, so I just wanna make sure.
Just to make sure we understand.
Yeah. Um, what PTR is proposing on Deep Forest Circle is if you're familiar with up there where the private road starts to go up and around towards Tullers, I think there's a porta potty there right now for the subcontractors for Taylor's construction is, as is on your, uh, insert in your packets, putting a split rail fence between that porta potty and going east over to kind of what I would call just the north part of Deep Forest Circle, putting cement pad there coming off of the stamped concrete. We may need to do rock retaining as well because there's been a lot of water flow coming off of the easement road due to the trucks that went up there and construction and whatever, but I know it's washed out our culvert and it's washed out rock things, um, so if we did some kind of retaining, which I don't think is on this proposal. So that would be an additional cost. As far as what the city has attempted to do in the past up there, there have been no trespassing signs put up by the water tanks um, to facilitate the sheriff in actually enforcing something, because there wasn't anything up there before. There were no parking beyond this point signs put up, kind of where the porta potty is now, to stop people from parking up by the water tanks. And then there were no parking after dark signs put up, so kind of leaving it to self-enforcement, if you will. And really, it hasn't worked. Um, people park up there after dark, I called the sheriff today, there was somebody up there at ten after five with a flashlight going round. I ended up soon going along the trail, but I called the sheriff because they were parked after dark, so people don't really pay attention. Um, I did see the sheriff come up, he shone his lights towards Taylor's and then shone his light towards the car. And he left, I don't know what happened after that, nor would I find out that kind of information. So what PTR is thinking is these signs that are on this little map here, you put up a sign saying, so about you're not parking after dark, no parking beyond this point, but you have to park head-on, reverse into whatever, park against the fence only from the porta potty over east. All other vehicles will be towed away at owner's expense. Jeff and I think it was Bob Otley, and I met with Corbett. Corbett did call the towing company and said, and here we get to the enforcement part, how this could be made better so people aren't parking by the fire truck or by the fire hydrant. They're not totally clogging up deep forest if, uh, ambulance or fire truck had to come up there, they would have no way to get through with the way people are parking now. So this is for the safety of the community, um, and particularly those of us that live up on Deep Forest Circle. So Corbett called the towing company and asked the towing company, could the city council give the Berbers, the Taylors, the Tullers? Rock things don't really have sight of the circle, but anybody that's up there, including the grays who come up temporarily, whatever you decide, permission to call the towing company. And then these vehicles are towed away that are improperly parked. This might give some bite to enforcing what's going on up there. And also, once vehicles start to get towed away, you wouldn't have the sentiment that I've been told by the sheriffs that does exist for the lowlanders, the people that live below us that come up here. You can, you can go up there, don't pay attention, Woodland Hills doesn't, they don't do anything. Because people would be getting towed away and it's at their expense, and where do we get out? So this might be a way for, um, enforcement. And it's mainly the people that are using the trail for pedestrian use, which is totally in keeping with the easement for them, for them to go up that way. I just think it's kind of a win-win and with volunteers and grants that we're looking at, this can defray the cost. Because we're not really proposing when this be done, because right now the Taylors and the Tullers will be building, but at some point that this is a good proposal to help the city with the safety of the residents up there and also to enforce the signs that we have up there.
First of all, I want to say I'm so happy to see you here. You know, you've been on our thoughts and prayers and we really appreciate all of you and Jeff have done for our city and we, we feel for you and we just want you to know that. That we love you and we're glad you're here. With that being said, though, um, this plan for it's, it's nine feet over here, nine feet out into the street. I know we have ordinances for the cul-de-sacs with regards to the, um, that
radius.
Radius for, for, um, fire trucks, for, um, emergency vehicles, for our big snowplow, because you do get a lot of snow. So we need that big snowplow to get up there. Have we had any confirmation from, from our public works that this will work for, and our safety, our public safety, that this will work with that, uh, those dimensions in there?
It won't work. It doesn't work as it currently exists. The fire truck cannot make a turn up there, whether or not the big plow can, I don't know. But the fire truck right now cannot make a turn, they still have to dedicate to turn around and get through there.
Sherri, were, were, were you going to nose in or was this parallel to the edge you were thinking in your?
Well, I think we can nose in, yeah.
And get more cars.
Yeah.
Get six cars.
Well, I think we can, if we nose in, I think this is taken from the edge of the, um, stamped concrete. That we can get more cars in there.
I think the chief actually reviewed an early map of this as we were visiting about this, and, and he liked it because it's better than it is now.
Thank you. And the property, the extra property, whose property is with that?
To the left is.
It's on Tullers.
And are you guys okay with that?
Actually, you go about thirteen feet behind the curb to the city right.
That's still city, so it's still city.
City right of way, but not city property, this. Oh, it's city. Is it city property? Right of way is property. Right of way is owned by the city. Easement is your property that I have access to. It's, it's the city right of way.
Tullers property begins.
On the other side, they split rail fence, or it's on the property lines.
Where the porta potty is right now is on, maybe pretty close, is on Taylor's. Taylors have just a little bit of that cutout as you're looking up the bank where the private road comes around. But most of this proposed parking would be on Tullers property.
So this, um, split rail fence is actually on Tullers property or on the easement?
It's still on the city, because it's only nine feet.
The city easement, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
It's still on the city.
And then we have proposed in the budget, um, some funds for PTR, are you proposing to use those proposed funds? Or would you look, want to look for additional funds for that?
Depending upon when the job would get done and what other projects we have.
Because this is just the material cost, we don't have a labor cost, right?
No, we get, we get volunteers. I don't know how we get volunteers to do the rock retaining, maybe we can talk to.
We can get that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do it. Yeah.
And I think the rock will help possibly, I don't know, maybe further could add to that with the debris flow that we are getting down, coming down Deep Forest Circle. From the top of the circle, it just goes down.
Well, yeah, I like this idea, but I really am kind of, I would like this to have something formal from public works, snowplow, or public safety just to make sure that they really are okay with it, it's not just simply so that.
Right, no, and, and, and we're not.
We're not.
Opening, I mean, this is just opening a discussion.
That maybe if we have this, I would like those documents in place before we go.
Yeah, I, I.
I think.
Oh, sorry.
So giving back to the enforcement, sounds like we've got an enforcement problem today. I don't know, in my mind, it's not clear that just setting aside parking spaces solves enforcement either. Because there's gonna be some times where you're gonna have more vehicles than without parking. So can we go back to the enforcement, where are some of the ideas that we've really?
What have we tried?
I, well, I know we've tried.
Yeah.
I don't know that deputizing citizens to call tow truck companies is a good idea, that just seems a little.
I would choose.
Well, it just seems a little wild west to me, um, I don't know how to say it nicer, um. So I'm just trying to figure out what, I don't know, I, I mean, I'll give you an example, um, about eight months ago, there was a full moon and it was midnight, and so my whole family drove up here and we did not park up in the cul-de-sac because I knew that that parking was not allowed. But we did park on the side of the road and then we walked up and we did the switchback trail at midnight. And it was an awesome experience. So I guess I just have some hesitancy with it, it feels like I'm turning this into like Central Park where I'm like not allowed to do things and I just don't like that. I, I moved to Woodland Hills because I could do what I could do, and so this bothers me.
Well, we've already got the signage up there, why did we put the signage up to begin with?
That's a great question. No, I, I get the reason why we need to have some level of control. But again, the signage isn't working, that's what you said. And so I'm not convinced that parking is going to work either. And again, I'm kind of concerned over this idea that you're only allowing people on the trail during the daylight. Anyway, I just, I, I'm just wondering.
That's a whole other presentation. To address that concern, again, we're looking at safety and we're looking at liability. I don't know who was up there today at five o'clock. I'm sure it was an incredible height because the moon was up, Saturn was up, Mars was up, Jupiter was up. The sky was incredible. But there's also five to eight trees that are down across the trail right now, and there's snow up there. And where those trees are down across the trail, if whoever was hiking in the dark with their flashlight that up there, I call it the sunny stretch, where you look down under the park and there's no trees on the right-hand side, that's where some of these trees are down. And in order to get around the trees, you have to walk on the side of the mountain.
I guess, seems the thing.
Liability wise, allowing people.
Why is that an issue?
Because it's your own trail.
I don't care. I mean, that, that trail's been there.
Somebody sued you, they fell down the trail, they fell down the side of the mountain.
If they did, that would, they'd have a harder time getting anything from us, because that trail's been there longer than the city's been here.
But it needs to be. Yes, that's true. My, my point about this, David, is the trail needs to be maintained, which is a whole nother issue that we are doing years and it hasn't been.
And I don't see why it's all of a sudden.
Hey, can I just jump in here? I mean, we, we, this can be an ongoing debate, I mean, Jeremy, you're here because I would imagine you've got something to say about fancy words. I, I mean, we're all residents here, this is a shared space, and we all deserve to be heard, so I think that we can vet this. Yeah, so we can start the conversation and then if there's support uh, in, in the community, then we can take the next step, and if there's not, then, you know, there's not, and I. And I think that's just the nature of how this can and should work, so.
Yeah, I also, I mean, I I understand why I want to do this, to try to tell people who drive on that street, these are the exact parking spots. So they're not just parking anywhere. I can understand that. I know, Corbin, we talked, but this is another discussion, but we've talked about other. Alternative parking spots in the future. And so, you know, this may be the this the stopgap until we can fully get any other ideas. That could come out, but I I think that if we're going to use any funds, then from the city, it should come from what we've already allocated, not additional.
Yeah, well, I find it going to be a different stage of this process too, but I didn't.
Well, because we do we do have some proposed in the budget for this next year for PTR, so we can look.
Nothing at this level. This is thousands.
Yeah. Well, but it's a starting point, so.
Which I appreciate, that's.
But I do I do agree with, especially during the winter. Enforcing, I do I do agree with enforcing parking on the side of the road in the winter. You know, we should be able to enforce that.
I'd love to see just citywide, maybe this is where you're getting that parking on the street enforcement. Because it's when you guys go with the pod drivers, you know, when I went. Those cars on the side of the the street, especially when you're in the big truck, that car is not going to win. That plaque will win every single time and. It's not safe for our drivers. It's not safe for the car. It's not safe for for anything. And I'd love to see if we can enforce that. I don't know. If WWE has anything there, but.
Right now, it's up to the snowplow drivers to call it in.
And the other thing is the hydrant up here, because the hydrant gets blocked. So if we did have a fire.
Bring the snowplow up there, move that car.
It isn't just the wind. People park in front of the hydrant all the time and I understand.
Because we don't have a return.
Break the window and.
Well, I guess I'm trying to say I agree with the enforcement part. I'm concerned about some of your ideas around regulating the switchbacks. I I think some of those.
Alternative to what's been happening.
But I do agree with enforcing the parking. We we should be able to enforce that.
Yeah, and I think that we should have a conversation with WWE about things that can be done in the interim, you know, so I think.
Yeah, if we don't if we don't make that lock down, then we should do a better job of locking that part down. I I agree with that.
Well, my understanding from past deputies and because I'm the one that calls them, I usually go down and then we talk to them. Is David, if you were parked in front of a fire hydrant and you were parked after dark, the deputy calls you based on your license plate and says, oh. Mr. Pratt, would you please come move your car? And then he drives away. You stay up there doing whatever, still parked in front of the fire hydrant and come down and move your car and. See, that's what's happened in the past from what I see, because I have eyes on this circle.
Okay, thanks, Sheri.
Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, don't forget about her.
Oh, yeah, you can report on that. Um, so PTR. Needed to name their executive committee because they've had some changes. Uh, so the can the executive committee members and those will be the ones where they can form the forum and be able to vote on these. Will be Sheri, Bernard, John Wallace, and I'll give these to Jody unless she's writing it down. Brad, who's saying his last name? Copo, Michelle Crowe, John Wallace, and Natalie Tanner. And so they they've got the executive committee and then they'll vote for the chair and the.
That needs to be, I think, decided on by the council, Janet.
Does it?
Yeah, you're proposing names to be approved.
Executive, yeah. Okay, all right. I don't know how to do that yet.
Upcoming council meeting agenda and then.
I guess so. Do we have to text this to you?
Yeah, that'd be great. And Joe too.
Yes.
Have we seen getting minutes for meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll send it to also be done.
So I would like it to be included in a packet. That would be helpful. Yeah, do you make that?
We'll talk off. Okay. It's a learning curve.
Anything else, Janet?
No, no, everything is good.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, council member Malvich.
Yes, communications, we're just opening up the newsletter every Tuesday. If you have anything, please let me know so that we can make sure to include it. We've tried to expand and say, uh, put some things out from our. Our Salem Hills High School kids who live here in in town and we've got some parents who've given us those types of things. As well as our ordinances and and whatever else comes up, so. Please remember to get that to me if you can on Monday prior to to when you want to publish. Emergency management, I attended the state emergency management conference last week. It was very interesting, learned a lot. It's like from Firehose, but. Interesting thing is after last year that HB ninety-six was passed and every city is required to have an emergency manager. So that's when I when mayor Pray appointed me to that position. I've been doing lots of training and things since then, but I at this conference, there was a lot of people who have their degree in emergency management. But they had a session just for the new EMs and I was the only new city. Young, out of two hundred and fifty cities, maybe thirty to forty have somebody who's paid either part-time or full-time. And there was also a lot of agencies there, so I was a little awkward and I said, well, I think I'm representing a lot of little cities and they had a vote on their dues. They went from twenty-five to eighty and they gave all the reasons why and I raised my hand and asked if there could be a tiered system for. Class of cities and they all said, no, 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 everybody can do it because there's grants available. And so, you know, all of them voted in favor and I voted against and everybody looked at me like, what? But so I met with the woman from the state who does what's called the EMPG grants to say, can we qualify? Because the grant was due that same day. And found out that all the cities that have somebody who's a pay EM get the money, whatever they put in for, they get. And but if you have unpaid EMs, then you don't qualify because it's a private grant. And so, um, they said, well, you can make your clerk the EM. And I said, she would kill me. She would kill me. So so I'm going to be working on this on a state level to say, what can we do? Because you require all the cities to have one, but you won't allow us to apply for the grants to be able to attend it. So I'm working on that. So so but there was lots to learn, lots lots of people who were very encouraging and they. Did ask my opinion on lots of things with regards to smaller cities and how we do things. So I thought that was helpful. Um, with regards to Lake Commission, a lot has happened. We had HB two thirty-two. That on May first of twenty twenty-three, we will dissolve the Utah Lake Commission and formally become the Utah Lake Authority. Um, Woodland Hills at this time will not be on the Utah Lake Authority unless, um, the mayors. The mayors, um, just called CAU for the county council of governments, all the mayors get they get to vote for two cities. That are not in the original proposal to serve on the Lake Commission. So we may have an opportunity to continue to serve if that council so chooses. The but we approve the budget, um, going forward, we have some capital projects, um, et cetera. The, um, budget starting this year as we transition from Utah Lake Commission to Utah Lake Authority on July first of this year. The state will give some money to help that transition as it occurs. Um, the lake is three point nine feet below full, which is pretty good for this time of year. And they've put up some cameras on, uh, at their, uh, at the different arenas, Lincoln Beach, uh, Linden American Fort. Uh, Circle of the Springs, um, and of course the state park. Um, there are lots of grants out there that we're working on, um, the Habitat Council grant request that would help, uh, with some of that. Energy species control, uh, Provo River Delta project is coming along really, really great. That's going to be an amazing. Place for all of us and so we have a tour coming up on that. They, uh, a lot of people are still confused about the Lake Authority versus the Lake Restoration Project, which is a private funded part. Project that right now, um, Utah Division of Forestry and State Lands, um, owns that property, the state, and nothing can be approved without them. So although the Lake Authority was put in place, there is no authority to do anything of the project. So that would go through, um, Division of Forestry, Fire and State Lands as well as the entire legislature and the governor's office. So, um, that is is finished. Um, Woodland Hills and we had some, um, residents who participated in what was called the Fish Fest. And so participation went on, when everybody was excited to go ice fishing and there's some pictures, et cetera. We did participate last year in the life jacket loner program and so there will be seven stations that are being built along the lake. Um, four hundred life jackets were either donated or putting, uh, money was given as a cash donation or something. And what else was was one of the, um, people who, you know, our citizens, um, did that. Uh, Water Safety Awareness Month is in May, so we might want to put that in with our with our safety expo. And, um, things are going well there. We we, um, we're doing, we're doing a lot of work. We we were supplied heavy lifting the last couple of months. We almost met, uh, we had our official meetings, but we had meetings almost every day. Last month, so that was a lot of heavy lifting. I testified several times during legislative session on the lake. Even aspects of the lake and so it was it was a crazy time, but you know, at least we have our voice heard and what's important to the city, so.
Yeah, and thank you for that.
So I forgot one last thing real quick. They did form, in case you are an angler, the Utah Lake Fisheries Management Advisory Council, which is a one. A mouthful, but if you are interested in in participating in that at all, um, it's a, they're getting different, they're getting the angling pub. Public as well as law, Division of Wildlife, um, Lake Commission, Environmental Authority, Fish and Wildlife Services and divisions of parks. So if you're interested in going to any of those meetings on the Utah Lake Fisheries Management Advisory Council, let me know.
Thanks, Jared. Okay, uh, council member Pratt.
Okay, um. I'm gonna kind of skip the first two. We had our budget retreat last week, so I can ask groups where the. And the finance committee that attended was there, was able to. So, um, the sumwa, that was the piece that I neglected to bring up a month ago. They did, in fact, vote to sell that property, which means our city will be getting some amount of that money back. Not much. We might be able to get actually.
There's your reason.
We got the, we got our.
Oh, okay.
So anyway, um, that that's pretty much everything.
Okay, thanks, Abe. All right, and likewise for me, I don't really have anything to report, uh. Been attending the SESD and MAG meetings, but, uh. All right, uh, any other items or upcoming city council agendas? So Janet, what was that? When you brought up again.
It was, I texted it to you.
Oh, that's right, it was the parts and.
It was for the executive committee and, um, members and then once we get those approved, then we'll vote for the chair.
Okay, any others that anyone wants to raise at this point?
Just the public hearing or possibly something.
Yeah, so we're going on that, right, or?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a plan. Let's do that.
Okay, well, then why don't we take a quick break? Um, this was a long meeting, so. We can reconvene at eight thirty-five and. All right, so council member Malvich will be offering pledge, air and council member Lutz.
Did everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I just, I will celebrate how we could meet together this evening to discuss city matters and to. Try to make good decisions on behalf of our community. Please help us to make sure that we consider everyone in our decisions and that we. Will do what's best for the city and please bless those in our community that are in need of this and stand just personally.
Okay, um, so. We have got some consent agenda items. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, council member Pratt makes the motion.
I'll say.
Council member Lyne, a second. Um, this is a roll call vote, so council member Malvich.
Yes.
Council member Hillary.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Anderson.
Yes.
Council member Black.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, so now we have a public comment portion. I know that Jeremy Rockbank is here. So as it as we discussed, Jeremy, the public comments are related to this or less and those submitted via the mail. So anyway, I will, uh, are there any others that care to get a public comment too? Okay, so between the two, you got four.
We're working this.
Okay, well done. Uh, any others that want to get in the lineup? Okay, Rockbanks, it's yours.
We can like switch up every word. Well, yeah.
I'll see how you handle it.
Okay, no pressure. Well, thanks for meeting, um, with us. Um, yeah, I would just like to give everyone kind of a little bit of of, you know, our perspective and point of view. Um, we've got a lot of kids at our house. And I would hope that kind of when we go through this, maybe can remember back when you had a gaggle of kids at your home and all that kind of fun stuff. When we first moved up here, oh, not when we first, we first bought our first lot. We, um, we had different regulations on fencing and I remember, and I, and Jody might recall us, we talked a couple times about fencing ordinances. Um, we knew that it it had to be, um, a wrought iron fence. And couldn't exceed six feet tall and all that kind of stuff. So we wanted to put in a fence, but we didn't have the house at the time. A C three fence, yeah. So, um, just kind of a little bit of our situation. Um, we built the home, we, um, we're immersed in some lots and. I didn't know that, like, the the obviously the regulations have changed, so I went ahead and started putting up a fence. Trying to stay within compliance of of, you know, what I knew the what the regulations were and, um. And then it got stopped. We didn't obviously know at the time. So, um, kind of where we're at is we've got a, like I said, a bunch of little kids that are kind of on a really on a. Stretch in that Woodland Hills that people drive super fast, which is a problem. We have, um. We have kind of a unique situation with the neighbors across the street with us. Um, where they don't live there full time, they just kind of come up on the weekends and then they they have like. I don't know if they have guests of like thirty or forty that kind of sleep there at night, but there is a highly transient area and. Um, we've had people trespassing in in our property before and mostly, and then we have a dog issue. We put up a couple. We've got kids that can open up the door and let the dogs run out, which is awesome.
Hey, Jeremy, I'm just.
Yeah, okay, I'll go super fast. And. Yeah, okay. So anyway, just kind of looking at the different fences at, uh, in Woodland Hills. I think I'm, I think we all kind of know there's there's a lot of different types of fences. There's about. I mean, about forty-seven or forty-eight fences that I've counted so far. That they consist of fully closed or partially, you know, C three or not C three, some are chinny lakes, some are woods, some are wrought iron fences, some are. Frontages right there and, um, and we just want to get in a fence. We we spent kind of significant amount of money for for our fence. I was down and chatting with somebody at the bottom down down. I was down and chatting with somebody at the bottom down west state center and she just put up her her, yeah, her post. And I was chatting with her yesterday and she said she got hers approved. And she's like, I think she's like five feet off of the frontage. And hers is fully enclosed, it connects with their house. So I I just, just anyway, that's just kind of our situation, trying to get it in, trying to be a good neighbor. Trying to keep kids safe, trying to keep our dogs enclosed and trying to get up the value of the property. So.
Could you do that thirty seconds?
No, no, that's not good. Well, if he's gonna be good cop a little bit, I I might be bad cop in my thirty seconds if I have, if I have to be. But the hope is that we can resolve this because I have kids and I am a mama bear. So I'm gonna do anything I can to protect them. And so I I want to control my property. I'm beautiful city, I'm helping my neighbors, I'm I'm being a good citizen. There's no reason to to, what I feel, be unfairly targeted. That's how I feel at this point, looking at everybody, all the inconsistencies throughout the city. No matter what year the fences went in before the ordinances or after the ordinances, this new lady that we just spoke with. It's it's kind of a slap in the face to see her having cities turn blind eye. And even her having conversations with city people where they tell them exactly what we were told and exactly what we were following. And then it's it's they're not being targeted, they're not having phone calls threatening the police against their landscapers of being put into jail if they ever should step foot on our property. I mean, it's outrageous. We were, there was a sign put in our yard because we were using heavy machinery the other day to fix a pipe. Outrageous, outrageous, a sign with with explaining that we were gonna be jailed because we were breaking the law. I mean, it's an embarrassment of how this is handled. Uh, we are good, outstanding citizens who will always, always help the city, who will always make it more beautiful, preserve, help our neighbors. We're not, we're not enemies, we are assets and we need to be treated fairly.
Appreciate your comments.
Thanks for taking kids to bed.
Okay, very good.
Can you remind me, I forgot your first name, Jen, Jen, Jeremy Jen.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.
Do we have, is this everybody online?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then I guess we don't have anybody else. Okay, so that will close the public comments. All right, item twenty-six. Ordinance amending the city of Woodland Hills development and construction standards. Two point eight point six three D city code title ten seventeen one. Fire hydrants C six. Motion. Council member Malkovich makes the motion and second by council member Hillier. So roll call vote, council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Council member Hillier.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Kinison.
Yes.
Council member.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, item twenty-seven is the ordinance adopting annexation of twenty-one point six five acres of property owned by Robert Nelson Holdings, LLC Noel Ray and Sandra Hyatt, Corey Ray and Jessica S. Hyatt and Michael A. Griffiths. Motion. Okay, motion by council member Pratt. Second, council member Kinison, the second. So that's also a roll call vote. Council member Malkovich with, council member Hillier.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Kinison.
Yes.
Council member one.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, the preliminary flat approval for stones, all.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll say.
Takes the motion, council member Malkovich second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, request a rezone for a portion of property being annexed in the city by Robert Nelson as per our review discussion.
This is just to send to planning permission, right, correct?
I got the neighbor.
Yeah, this is the rezone.
Okay.
Is it basically this is just say send it to the planning commission so they can draw the, okay. River Road.
Yeah.
Because we don't even know what zone it is.
Yeah. I mean, they said our. But they still, we don't have a plan, so it needs to go to planning permission.
Okay.
Or meets and bounds. Yeah, meets and bounds.
Okay.
Meets and bounds.
So subject to those conditions, I'll let Ken object for.
I made the motion that we send that to the planning commission.
Okay, council member Pratt makes the motion. Council member Kinison, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item thirty, ordinance amending city code ten eleven eight B one E fences and edges.
I made the motion, we do not adopt that ordinance.
Okay, well, so.
Good bet.
Yeah, I think that.
So should we make the motion to vote and then you all vote no or?
No, we'll vote some most.
Okay, all right.
Our but our planning permissions, I'm so frustrated.
Well.
That's okay. It doesn't pay for sending it back.
I want to be clear that this is not at all reflected with the work of planning permission.
They've done a lot of it.
I I appreciate the work that they've done, they've invested in this, I'm simply against the idea.
Okay, so we restate your motion then, so.
Then we do not adopt this ordinance.
Okay.
It's that simple.
And door side and then. So now we're, you know, the discussion, right?
So.
I from listening.
As far as I'm concerned, this ordinance is basically stating, and we've hashed this out so many times, but currently it's not changing the current fencing ordinance beyond pushing it. We currently have it, so it's five feet off the property line. And so if David and I lived next door to each other, there's now ten feet in between us, that's no man's kindling land, right? And he's.
Well, you're so responsible for it because you own it.
Correct, but it creates a barrier.
You make me nervous if you're gonna put up a fence ten feet from this.
Well, exactly. Well, yeah.
Well, and if the neighbor doesn't have a fence, they can claim your property.
So this ordinance doesn't change the fencing, you know.
As long as you maintain it.
Yeah, for me.
You're the one that goes in and maintains it.
I think it's a good.
Okay, so should we vote on this motion then? So it doesn't sound like there is a broad consensus concerning.
Well, so because there's a motion, we do have to vote.
Yeah, so I'm gonna say, so we'll vote on that and then we will see if there is a a second motion, okay? So all in favor of the motion as presented by council members Pratt and Kinison? All in, let's see, will this be a roll call?
It is more than a suggestion.
It would, okay, council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Council member Hillier.
No.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Kinison.
Yes.
And council member one.
No.
Okay, but it does still has, so motion carried.
So it's still, we we might have to go back to some other.
So you sound frustration about fencing and I saw there's.
So ordinance is not.
Correct.
Ordinance is not approved.
I know, I know, but.
There's a lot that I've had, I've had quite a few people calling me about fences.
I stand alone in this in the city side, but I don't think their fence would be offensive. And and I'm sorry, I feel like. I I know, I know, but it's their property and I don't want it. That's my opinion on it. And I know it didn't get it from the get-go, it didn't, it didn't go through all the right steps potentially, but but I hear what they're saying and and I'm sensitive to that and and I'm okay with what they're, what they want to do personally.
Yes, I I mean, it's certainly a conversation we're having and and I I do think there's a difference between you know, like a C C and R, this is, this is a, this is a, this is a government imposition on private property.
It's not gonna hurt the animals in the area. I mean, there's a lot of reasons I feel like, but.
Okay, all right, well, so.
Mayor, thanks.
Yeah.
Question. I'm curious why you sent it back to us last time. If that was a general feeling, why did it come back to us? What what did we do wrong? In maybe just the same thing, maybe you didn't change enough? I don't know, but we want some economy too to what we're doing. And I I certainly understand that you're free to say what you want to do. But I'm just curious.
Yeah, so just in terms of the history, so this was something that was proposed by the planning commission, right? In an effort to address what seemed like a a problem in the existing ordinance, right? And so, but I I I see your point, Wayne, about, you know, sending it back if it never had any real hope of surviving the vote.
I'll say for me, from my standpoint is, one, I had residents who called me and talked about talked about the quality of life of Woodland Hills, not having a fence, you know, completely around or whatever. You know, that idea similar to what they were wanting. That's not this ordinance, but they have then started other conversations. The thirty-foot setback on any road was something that was sent to was top, people talked to me about that. That it doesn't, whether it's your side lot or your front lot of your, if you're a buddy in a road, then the thirty-foot setback should be on there. So that was the main vote for me, I voted no was for that issue. I still feel that we need to have it for the plane of the house. Ben brought up a good point, if your front of your house is facing a sideline, not your front of you, not your driveway, which is on the street, does that count? Can you still then fence around the front of your house? Because the front plane would then change to the side street that faces, I mean, your side, which might be your garage that faces the street. And so there's there's some confusion, I think, with with that on on where that where that's plain of the house is, if if the side is facing the street, you know, you're right. So those are two issues that for me that citizens talked to me about.
Council member one.
Just to answer your question, there was a lot of confusion. Even Robert Nelson didn't understand the way it was written last time, that's why I sent it back last time. To answer your question directly, because even I wasn't sure, because I read it several times and I wasn't sure what was meant. As far as on this, on the corner, is it the forty-five, you know, inches plus the thirty feet back? Or it wasn't clear, that's why we sent it back last.
And I would like, if we gotta have a fence ordinance, I would like it to pertain, a different ordinance to pertain to different parts of the city. Once we started putting sidewalks in, I think, man, that looks like some other places in other cities and their fences were not what that ordinance said. You know, I want fence ready for the sidewalk, a very low one potentially on my yard if I was on the sidewalk.
And smaller lots, they have, they don't have a lot to work with.
Yeah, Ben.
I think we just need to, and this is not gonna be popular, I'm apparently on the trend for not popular statements, but I think it would be great if we had two fencing ordinances, one for ups here, one for down there. And I'd love diagrams, I don't know if that's a non thing, you don't put diagrams in ordinances. I'd love diagrams for normal lots or corner lots, so four diagrams total. I don't know if that's.
The size of lot, Jimmy.
I understand, we do have two fencing, we do have one up here and one down there.
And that could be another factor here is we might not know what currently is going on.
I'm now arguing with my chairman, there is only one fencing ordinance. And it covers in two separate parts, everything up here. And then C is what covers R one nineteen, which is right now just four seasons.
Right.
But Carrie, fences have been around since you guys passed the fence ordinance back in twenty seventeen.
Even before that, when I was Chair of Planning Commission, we worked on fences and that was in the nineties.
Well, I'm saying you passed this one in twenty seventeen.
It's not a.
And you can have a fence.
Yes.
It's just gotta be five feet away from the property line, which makes no sense for R one nineteen, now they're four seasons.
Well, I think I'm okay with it being on the property line, I didn't, I didn't want the setback from the road.
Yeah, I think.
So I think that's my issue, it's not the property line per se, it's the the willing road.
Carrie, that's what it said the first time.
I know, but I didn't say I was against it the first time, did I?
Well.
Why don't we do this? Although if you want to revisit it.
It's not.
Well, that's the council.
After this, but yeah, so the the vote is what we've done tonight and we'll leave it at that. It can be revisited, but yeah, thanks for your efforts nevertheless.
Sorry.
Okay. Item thirty-two, resolution amending the city fee schedule to include the appeal officer hearings.
We forgot construction of burn for two.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they're sitting here.
Okay, sorry about that. I checked and I I I must have preempted me voting on that. Okay, construction of burn for two of property two hundred east deep four circle. Can I get a motion? Okay, council number one.
I'll say it as long as we put the caveat in there of the of who is using the equipment that no city budget is being used. And we have some waivers for it, I believe.
Okay, so those are three items then. Okay, so that's a conditional second, do we have an unconditional second?
Yeah, so just because this is kind of an unusual situation. I'd just like to make sure that when we make the motion that we're making it kind of more specific than just, because I don't really, I don't understand what construction of burn for two of the property two hundred east deep sort of four circle really means. I mean, I do because of our conversation, but if I were a resident, I was trying to understand what will we just approve? I'd have questions, so I'd like the motion to be a little more specific.
To the plans we're given.
So so Carrie brought up three items then.
So you want to, you want to, you want to make the motion with your three items?
Motion first then. Well, or you could restate it if you want, but maybe according to the plans that were presented to us tonight.
Yeah, I mean, is that what we want?
Yeah, that would be specific to the plans that were presented tonight, prove it according to that, and then I have those three conditions.
And my understanding was when I made a motion that that's what I was approving, so, yeah, sorry for not being more specific.
No, and 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 I I we didn't give you like a a well crafted motion opportunity. So so subject to the class tonight, and so we use state those three conditions.
We're not spending city budget, that we are making sure that those who are using the equipment are qualified and that the the volunteers are have leave or something that that.
A liability waiver. Okay, so that's a second, right?
Well, but do you accept those conditions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right, so.
And I, you know, I would make the motion as presented by court.
Okay, so council number one makes the motion, seconded by council member Malkovich. And so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
So can we get something into the newsletter? Can we start maybe?
Why don't you send me something?
Okay, and get a few volunteers.
Yeah, I spoke with Aries about helping with volunteers for those types of things, because I don't, I don't know a lot of people and anyway, he offered to help, so.
Yeah, we can put something out there, so if you just, you send me a list of what you need or write up or whatever you want, I'll put it in next week.
Two, just want everybody to bring their car up, we're just gonna start right now.
There's only six parking spots.
Is that what? We're gonna bury those in the burn.
If anybody that parks with the cars will just.
I'm gonna drive a big tractor and this just deleted my, I have no skills.
You can go to the training.
Do you have different skills? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, you got all that, Jody? Okay, all right, item thirty-two, resolution amending the city fee schedule to include the for appeal officer hearings and to change the fee for the ADU application from a fee to a deposit.
A deposit with reimbursements or any complaints, funds not spent.
Refund.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion. Oh, no, I'm not making.
No, I'm.
And it says here. Okay, so council member Malkovich made the motion, seconded by council member Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion carried. Uh, item thirty three, resolution adopting the December twenty twenty one check dispersion, check dispersments.
I'll move to approve that.
Council member Pratt makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Council member one, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolution adopting the January twenty twenty two check dispersments.
I'll make a motion.
Council member one makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Council member Hillier, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, um, so there is some legal updates. So we will, uh, I, I entertain a motion to move to a closed session while we discuss, uh, legal, uh, matters, um, pursuant to Utah code fifty two four two oh five.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, I.